Sexual orientations, gender identities and gender expressions. We are proud of all the individuals who have done so much for our LGBTQ2S community here in Sault Ste. Marie and the determined work they all continue to do in creating Pride Fest each year in Sault Ste. Marie, in which I'd like to add is the fifth annual Pride Fest this year.
So in short, LGBTQ2S folks deserve to be loved, cared for, and accepted and respected within their communities. Supporting LGBTQ+ people needs to be a daily commitment, affirm their lives, identities, relationships, and politics of the LGBTQ+ people in our lives, to call out homophobia, biphobia, transphobia when we see it or hear it, to be clear in our inclusion of LGBTQ+ people in all that we do. We can build communities which are based on the foundations of acceptance and inclusivity. Diversity is not just about recognizing our differences, but rather acknowledging our uniqueness and individuality. In acknowledging this uniqueness, it's evident that we're actually very much the same, people with different identities and layers, but people nonetheless. Pride Fest Week is a time to continue to make our community diverse, inclusive, and an accepting place for all to belong. So I ask everybody to please check out our Pride Fest schedule on Facebook, and we welcome all to join us for the events happening during Pride Fest Week, July 22nd to 29th.
Thank you. So my proclamation is actually beside you, so the clerk is just getting that for me.
All right.
Apologize, they usually make it down to the desk here, but...
No worries, no worries.
I look forward to joining you for the flag raising this weekend.
Absolutely, look forward to that as well.
That's on Sunday morning?
Sunday morning at 10:00 AM.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have a proclamation to recognize Pride Fest Week. Whereas queer and trans people are vital and valued members of our community, diversity, acceptance, understanding, and inclusion are core values that we seek to attain, uphold, and promote. And whereas we recognize the importance of inclusive opportunities, a more visible queer community and the freedom to express oneself without prejudice, and Sault Ste. Marie celebrates the diversity that strengthens our city, including individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, two-spirited, and all other sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas the rainbow pride flag is raised to honor LGBTQ2SA members of Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma, the colors represent the diversity of the LGBTQ2SA community. The color red signifies life, orange is healing, yellow is sunlight, green represents nature, blue symbolizes serenity, peace and harmony, and purple represents spirit. And whereas the importance of creating safer spaces, developing allies, and eliminating homophobia, transphobia, and biphobia cannot be understated, and we seek to ensure the wellbeing of all queer and trans people, their families, and their friends in our community. And whereas Pride Fest is an inclusive week for all in the community to come out to support, celebrate, and enjoy the many events and activities that focus on education, awareness, community development, creative expression, and fun for the whole family. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, am Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim July 22nd to July 29th, 2018, as Pride Fest Week in the City of Sault Ste. Marie, and I encourage all citizens of all orientations and identities to join together in this celebration. Thank you very much for all the work you did to organize this.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, under Agenda Item 5.2, Social Services Awareness Week, Mike Natto is in attendance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Members of Council. Typically, I'm doing the speaking, but I'm going to ask some of our frontline team members to speak tonight. The proclamation that we're going to be asking you to read stemmed from some research that our frontline team members did, and they realized that many members of the community had really virtually no idea what social services offered. There was a lot of mistruths and misconceptions, so our staff came up with a concept of developing a Social Services Awareness Week that really starts to promote the services and the great work that our team members are doing. So I'd like to ask if Peggy, Jo, Heather, and Laura can come to the podium and say a few words.
Good afternoon, Members of Council, Mayor. Social Services plays a pivotal role within the community. We provide services to over 10,000 people each and every month. We have a vision of a fully engaged community where everyone is valued, respected, and recognized. We believe that this vision is possible and achievable. There is not an individual, household, or demographic in the community that we do not serve. We provide affordable housing to seniors, working families, and individuals, and manage a social housing system that includes 2,399 units across the city. We manage a system that oversees every nonprofit childcare space in the community, every space. We provide income and employment supports to approximately 4,700 adults and children each month. We oversee the land ambulance system that responds to approximately 18,000 calls a year.
Social Services employs 111 full-time members and 19 students to provide our services. We are professionals, knowledgeable, and passionate about our work, and we are proud of the services we provide. Unfortunately, many community members do not fully understand the work that we do, nor the services we provide. We offer programming and services aimed to help people enter the labor market. In fact, this year, we have 17 separate employment support programs. We provide funding to every nonprofit childcare space in the system. It's not only for parents who receive childcare subsidy. Social Services provides support to food banks and homeless shelters. We provide support to agencies to help people manage and overcome their addiction. We also provide funding to every social housing provider in the community, such as the Italian Housing Corporation and the Lions Club Housing Corporation.
Unfortunately, many community members are not aware of the vital role that we play or the services we provide. That is why we are asking this chamber and you, Mayor Provenzano, to declare the week of August 13th, Social Services Awareness Week. During this week, we will be conducting outreach in attempt to educate the public about our role in all the services and health that we provide. On August 15th, we will be hosting our third annual Game On event with our chapel housing community, and would like to extend an invitation to the Mayor, all Members of Council, and the public to attend.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Mayor, we'd ask if you could please read the proclamation.
Absolutely. Whereas the District of Sault Ste. Marie Social Service Administration Board, also known as Social Services, pursues a strong sense of community awareness and endeavors to be a leader in the development of a fully engaged community where everyone is valued, respected, and recognized. And whereas Social Services aspires to become the trusted source of social services in the community through their dedication to helping people, building lives, and strengthening community. And whereas Social Services will seek to serve to increase public awareness about the program delivery of Ontario Works, early years services in housing, and the good work being done on a daily basis. And whereas the Social Services Awareness Week will incorporate media campaigns and public events, bringing the community together to acknowledge and embrace the unique role that Social Services plays in the community while expanding the awareness of Social Services. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, am Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim August 13th to August 19th, 2018, a Social Services Awareness Week, and invite all members of the community to take part in Social Services Awareness Week, to acknowledge, celebrate, and embrace our community in its cultural past, present, and future. Council Myers?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Mike, and team. I know that your team is all women here, Mike. That's why you look so good, right? You're so well organized.
Wow, thank you.
Talk about a biased statement. I just wanted to ask if you could please be sure and send an email to us with the date again for Game On. I admit that I need those reminders. I appreciate it very much. And just again, I've said before, Mike, your leadership is demonstrated here with your team, and I just appreciate what you do. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nadeau. Thank you for the... Good job. Thank you for the good work that you and your staff do in the community.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, before we go to the next delegation, Councilor Myers had requested that 8.2 be brought forward. That's the motion on Ian McMillan's retirement. Ian is not able to be with us today, but we do have family present. It's a motion by Councilors Myers and Butland. Whereas Ian McMillan has been the Director of Tourism for the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation since 2001, and will be retiring at the end of July. And whereas Ian has developed and delivered a number of tourism marketing initiatives for our community that have brought recognition at the federal and provincial levels, and whereas these programs have had a direct economic impact on Sault Ste. Marie and area, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor and Council express our gratitude to Ian for his work and wish him much success and enjoyment in his retirement and any future endeavors.
Council Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Ian's lovely wife, Lisa, and daughter, Ashley, if they would come forward because I think they maybe have a brief message from Ian. If they don't, they'll make one up right now. Ashley, I know you can do that. Or I can put words in his mouth, but it might be better coming from you. I think he indicated he just wanted to kind of acknowledge the support of Council over the years. But while they're doing that, I'll say that certainly when I came home to the Sioux in 1989 to the HATS organization, which was the convention bureau of the day, Ian was, I believe, already managing at Algoma Country, if not, he was pretty close to getting into that role. So we worked together for several years. Ian, basically, what we used to say was Ian marketed everything that you couldn't do in downtown Sault Ste. Marie, and I did everything that you wouldn't drive a snowmobile or a fishing boat through. So I did the city, he did the district around, which Algoma's huge. So he really put Algoma on the map in all the work he was doing. And then he saw the light and came over to us at the EDC. He was hired as the first Director of Tourism for the City of Sault Ste. Marie, and I had the delight of working with him for two years before I retired. So just, I think, a number of the people in this chamber know Ian, they know his work, they know his passion and excitement for our community. And he and I both would say it's a real privilege to be the one who markets and promotes your hometown that you love so much and indeed believe is naturally gifted. And he did it, and he's done it well. But beyond that, Ian has really put Sault Ste. Marie on the map for the province and the federal tourism bodies. He sits on a number of provincial committees, and he's been consulted many times over the years. He's really perceived and is genuinely a tourism leader in the industry and has really changed things up mightily in Ontario tourism, and certainly Northern Ontario and certainly Sault Ste. Marie. So I wanted to take this, this is our last time that we will be meeting prior to his retirement, I just wanted to take this moment for Council to acknowledge that and thank him for his work that he's done. And as I say, I think that Lisa or Ashley are just going to say a quick word, too. Draw straw, ladies.
Thank you, Councilor Myers, Mayor, Council. Unfortunately, I don't have anything prepared, and Ian is out of town, but I know it's been his honor to serve the City of Sault Ste. Marie and area as Director of Tourism for Sault Ste. Marie. So thank you for supporting him, and this is a great honor for him. Thank you very much.
So I'll just end by saying that I agree with everything Council Meyer said. I'm going to try and find a reason for the next few meetings to say that every meeting needs to be Council Meyer's last, but Ian's been a great guy to work with, and I think he's done, from my estimation, a pretty great job in tourism for Sault Ste. Marie. So he's got a career that he can certainly be proud of, and we wish him well, not in his retirement, because I don't expect Ian to have the disposition to retire. I'm sure he's going to keep busy doing something, but thank you for sharing him, and he did a great job for the City of Sault Ste. Marie, and we thank him for it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that brings us to Agenda Item 5.3, Erma Tinger Clerk National Historic Site 2017 Annual Report.
Welcome to Council, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
You can get going whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor Provenzano, Members of Council, Members of Senior Staff, and citizens of Sault Ste. Marie. I would like to today acknowledge Council Schumaker for being on the Historic Sites Board for the last year for which this annual report is being presented. The Historic Sites Board governs the operations of the Erma Tinger Clerk National Historic Site on behalf of you, Council. As a requirement in their bylaws, an annual report must be provided each year. The full report was submitted for your review, but today I'd like to just bring a few highlights and accomplishments from 2017. What a year. 2017 was a year to be proud. The Historic Sites Board, staff, volunteers, hosted not only a number of events and activities for Canada's 150, as well as realizing a definite year of growth and development. Visitation could not have been achieved without the promotion from tourism partners and the new marketing tactics in our social media. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge two leaders in tourism that, together with their teams, have assisted the Erma Tinger Site in developing it as a destination attraction. Carol Caputo from Algoma Country, who has now moved on to a provincial tourism position, and the soon-to-retire Ian McMillan from tourism Sault Ste. Marie. These two organizations enabled the site to be part of tourism destination packaging for Sault Ste. Marie, and their efforts have paid off for the city and have not gone unnoticed. Attendance increased dramatically, resulting in the highest visitation in over a decade. We are seeing greater attendance from bus tours, cruise ships, and of course, events. We celebrated the development of the Group of Seven Package, Fringe Festival, Culture Days, Lobster Fest, Multicultural Day, Canada Day, the Parade of Paddles, all on top of regular events. Are you ready? This year, well, 2017, we surpassed 21,000 people. This is spectacular for the Old Stone House. The breakout is in three categories. Forty-four percent came from admissions, which includes the cruise ships and bus tours. But if you look at the details, just walk-in visitors of 4,400, just a few short years ago, that was the whole visitation in a year. Eighteen percent came from educational programming, in which we meet the curriculum of Ministry of Education combined with adult education programs. And the third, 38% from events. And of course, last year, a lot of events for Canada 150. You can see the chart with all the details, and it is, of course, in your annual report. We could not have done this without everyone. Success does not come alone. It comes with numerous, and I must emphasize numerous, partners in our community. Our Junior Gardener Program, as you can see the giant pumpkin there, comes with help from Horticultural Clean North Library and City Gardeners. Our Indigenous Component in Communities, IFC, Algoma U, Garden River, Bachwan, and Meati. The Downtown Association. Our schools, including White Pines, who brought Grade 12 class arts and culture high school majors and Grade 10 civics. And of all, and of all other arts and cultural institutions and/or people in our community that helped us put together Culture Days, Multicultural Day, and Canada 150 events last year. And as I mentioned, of course, tourism, who promote our site at trade shows, bus tour speed dating, and on their website, Facebook, and provincial packaging and promotion. Again, huge thanks to all the partners. This year, we had one new partner. Although we had a membership with the Ontario Museum Association, we took on a project with them for diversity and inclusion. It connected us to several new partners of American Sign Language, Access2, and more Indigenous presenters and our local microphone groups and schools. 2017 brought a complete year of new services. We now have a fully operated gift shop, which realized finally $10,000 in net revenue. Bookings for the revenue are increasing, bookings for venue rental are increasing from small corporate events, training workshops, and weddings. And social media becomes more and more important, as we are now online for ticket sales in, either in active net for programs and events, or Meridian under the tourism websites. Now, I've just given you a brief overview of our highlights and our cultural vitality within our community and our tourism purpose. However, I do remind you that the site is a museum and a heritage site that meets the standards of the provincial community museums, and the mandate keeps us focused on continuing our statement of purpose. Artifacts, archives, and exhibits are still all part and parcel of what we do in keeping our heritage preserved for future generations. We do strive, though, to add a whole lot of fun into our presentation and events for our visitors, whether local or tourists, and we want them to learn in an edutainment format. Thank you on behalf of the Historic Sites Board.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to start over here, Council Myers, Councilor. Myers first?
No. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to acknowledge Kathy, and I sat on the board for the first two years, and I see how hard she works, and I do want to give her a lot of credit for what she does. She's very calm and very organized, and I'm particularly happy to see that the net profit at the gift shop is $10,000, because I sat on the board when we were transitioning from the folks that were moving out and what we were going to do with it. So I'm very happy to see that, and congratulations on that, Kathy. So I don't think without you we'd be doing such a good a job. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Council Hollins?
Thank you. Basically, Council Overman said everything, but Kathy, you have formed an excellent team through your leadership, and we can go on and on and say thank you, but I also want to say thank you for working so hard for the Heritage Conference that we recently had. At that moment, I definitely noticed and had a pleasure to work with you and all your team. The energy you have, the spark you have, is very apparent in your team as well. And you mentioned a whole lot of fun? Yes. When you do visit your site, you do instantly have fun. So congratulations to yourself, congratulations to your team, and if it wasn't for your team, I don't know if, how can I say it? Sault Ste. Marie, if you haven't visited the site, go and see it, and it's just a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Council Myers?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Kath. Great presentation, as always. A couple of questions. The total permanent year-round staff team is how many, Kathy?
Two.
Two.
That's full-time.
Yep.
We do have some part-time as well.
Right, how many part-time?
Four. Just four.
Right, which is two more full-time equivalents, I guess, or one and a half, probably. So I think that's a critical for Council to take note of, and I'm going to put you on the spot with another question related to that. If you had one more permanent full-time staff member, do you see opportunities to create more revenue? Not necessarily through the shop, through the events and things that you, I know you're bursting at the seams right now. So do you see opportunities with the site that there could be more done if you had more manpower, woman power, person power?
Through Mayor Provenzano to Council Myers, yes. The answer is yes. We can do a lot more. Right now, we are actually turning away bookings because we just don't have the manpower. We try and do what we can and schedule our staff accordingly and spread as thin as possible. Right now, we're operating seven days a week with extended hours, so to meet the tourism demand and the train tour package. So I think it's a simple yes. We can do a lot more, create a lot more, bring in more people, and have longer hours.
Okay, and I wanted to make that point. Can you make comments now, Mr. Mayor, as well?
Go ahead.
Okay. It's not that long ago that some of the members of this table will recall when we were debating about whether or not we would build the Heritage Discovery Center. You remember that. And it was really a decision that the Council had to make, and we were told it would cost several hundreds of thousands of dollars beyond the 1.7 million that we got from the federal government and 1 million that we got from the provincial government. And we ended up building a $3.8 million project, was it, Kathy, in total?
Yeah, in total, 4.2.
4.2 million with the 1812 gallery and so on. So I think that what I really want to make the point for Council to understand is that this aligns so well with the future Sault Ste. Marie, our arts and culture pillar. I am on that team with Donna Hill singer at the Round Table on it, and I'm looking at Travis, and I know Tom's behind me. Others of our staff that are leading that community plan, and I can't overemphasize the jewel that we have. This is a national historic site. It's incredible that this municipality owns and operates a national historic site, and there's tremendous opportunity for expansion. But I'll tell you this, one day this summer, when I was in there for some programming, I said to Kathy, when did you last have a day off? She was on day 16. Day 16, folks. There needs to be more investment in human resources for the site, just to care for the staff we have there now, let alone the growth opportunities we have. So please, this Council, I know many of you will still be here next year, please continue to invest in the national historic site, Erma Tinger Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Is anybody else? Thank you very much for all your very good work.
Thank you on behalf of Historic Sites Board.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, before our next delegation, I had advised them that we would deal with that item after planning, as I wasn't sure how long it would take. I would suggest now that we enter into consent and get a number of items off before 5:30, when we have to go to the planning items. I would also ask Council, Mr. Nadeau is here, so if we could begin with Item 6.6, unsold tax sale properties for social housing, if there are any questions that way. I'm also aware that there is at least one person in the audience who is interested in any discussion Council may have on 6.16, sale of 305 Greenfield Drive.
Okay, so we're going to start with 6.6. Any comments or questions in 6.6, Council? Seeing none? Council Bruny, was that for 6.6?
Yeah, this is regarding social services, right?
Yeah, unsold tax sale properties for social housing.
So they just want to be involved in the bidding process? Am I correct?
I'll pass that to the CIO, and he can explain.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruny, I'll let the CFO explain in terms of the process. It's just a cascade where as part of, whenever there's an unsold tax sale, we go to our departments. We just want to add social services to that department.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to that? Michelle?
I just want to clarify that this is after we conduct our tax sale process, so that's where we start distributing it to the various departments of the city, and now we're going to include DSAB also to see if there's a requirement. So we still will be going through our regular tax sale process. They're not part of the tax sale process itself.
So they're not part of it, so they will have basically first choice over...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruny, there's a tax sale process that takes place.
Yes.
If we are unable to sell the property that we've taken over, then we go to our departments and say, can you use that parcel or that property? We're just simply asking that DSAB be included as part of the list of departments that we go to.
After the...
After the process.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to 6.16, which is sale surplus property 205 Greenfield Drive. Bids received. Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, we'll move to other matters on consent. Council Myers?
6.2, the outstanding resolutions. I guess this might be through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Deputy CIO for Corporate Services and City Clerk, Mr. White. Malcolm, some of the outstanding resolutions, such as the public art policy, will be rolled into the future Sault Ste. Marie reporting. I know that one in particular will be, I am looking at Travis, and I know Tom's behind me, and we did have a quick discussion, I think, about this through Virginia MacLeod at our last Arts and Culture meeting, but I'm wondering how we, do we need to do something for Council Butland and I to actually withdraw this so that it can roll that way, or what should we do to clean this up, to get it off this list?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers. We will be going through this at the staff meeting tomorrow. There are some resolutions that are...
There are some resolutions that are, do fall into a category. They've been overtaken by a broader initiative.
Okay.
One example is the report I have on tonight on the Truth and Reconciliation Committee.
Yes.
So, we will look to clean things up. If they don't fall into it, just because you, as a councillor who sponsored a resolution, leave and a new council takes over, as you've seen, there are resolutions that have been on the list that have preceded this council. They still are a wish of council, and they still are on the books. That being said, we have noted ourselves, there are some on this list that can be probably cleaned up or associated with broader initiatives.
Yeah, and again, ones that I was related to myself, that would be one of them, the public art policy, which I know would fit under our Arts and Culture. Another one is the film industry in Sault Ste. Marie. Again, I know we'll be, we're hiring, actually, for that position, and that will not be fulfilled by EDC. It's on the list as, they would be the lead on it, so again, that would be one that would be addressed the same way that you just described, correct? They will not be responding.
That's correct. When that resolution was originally passed, it was with the EDC.
Yes, absolutely.
A number of years ago.
It was, yeah. Correct, but that's another that's changed. Okay, the Vacation Village report, again, that will not be produced. Ian McMillan was the lead on that, and I'm fairly confident he doesn't have that report ready to come back to us in the next, well, he's gone anyway, before we meet again. So, that one, I believe Council Butland was involved with, and he may want to speak to it, but I don't think there'll be a report coming back on that, so I just wanted to flag that one in the outstanding resolutions. So, the Q3 reports, such as one that I have around the driveway snow removal, will they be coming in August or September when we're still effective and can deal with them? Because it said Q3. Obviously, we don't meet in October.
That's the intention. Q3 for council is the meeting in August and the two in September.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. That was it on that one, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on the outstanding resolutions list? Council Butland?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Province of Ontario Vacation Village is, I would leave it up to the clerk to carry through the whole thing with a fine-tooth comb, because some that were moved, not only by some two of us who are leaving, but prior members, are they still appropriate, are still pertinent? If someone has been gone for five or six years, is there someone out there who wants to take up the charge for that particular resolution? The one that Council Myers just mentioned, the International Village, that was a liberal government. I suspect that's gone by the wayside, so I think we have to take a very serious look at these, and I suspect some of them would be legitimately deleted. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on the resolutions? I have one comment on that. I just, when I went through the list myself, there was a lot that I think are underway or a lot that will roll into other projects we're doing, but I was bothered that the resolution we passed in September 2016 on ride-sharing, we have the taxi cab industry here tonight with us, so we passed a resolution in September of 2016 on ride-sharing, because if a ride-sharing service did come to Sault Ste. Marie, we would have to deal with that matter, and I, we asked staff to consult with the industry and look at regulations and look at what other communities were doing and report back. We're getting on two years later, and we've got nothing on that. So, there are some of these things that I think are, should take some time, but there are others that I think are very specific, and there are challenges other municipalities are dealing with. I frankly think that that one should have come back in a more timely manner, so apparently it's going to come back by August or September, but that's a short amount of time now, and, you know, we have to make sure that we talk to the appropriate people before we bring that report back, so I'll just leave that with staff as my comments.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, if I can just interrupt, Councilor Christian has arrived at the meeting, and he has conflicts to declare, so...
He has conflicts in 6.1.2, your spouse is an employee of OLG, and by law 11.1.1.5, because you're employed with the Golden Justice School Board. Conflict noted. Okay, so, Council Myers, were those the matters on consent?
I have more.
You have more? Keep going.
6.4, retention of restructuring lawyer fee update.
Go ahead.
Probably through you, to either our solicitor or our CIO. What is the remaining amount owing the city in taxes right now? May I ask that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask that the CFO give the exact number. It's just the pre-filing amounts and...
Sorry, I meant CFO, not the city solicitor. Sorry, Nolan.
It's the pre-filing amounts plus a portion of the post-filing amounts. We are currently in good stead. We are receiving $500,000 per month, as per the requirement, but I'll let the CFO give you the exact number.
Yeah, just an approximate figure of what's yet outstanding.
I don't have the... Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers, I don't have the exact amount right now, but the amount that's pre-filing is still unchanged, and all of the amounts, as the CIO has indicated that we have been receiving, is all related to mostly our post-filing, so we haven't really gotten any further in the hole.
So, what's that approximate figure? What's that approximate figure, please?
We're receiving $500,000.
$500,000 per month we've been receiving since last May, so I don't, like I said, I don't have the exact figure right now.
But it's about 18 million or something like that?
It's less than that.
Okay. Pick a figure, 10 million, 15 million? Just a rough...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the pre-filing was 14.1 million dollars.
Thank you.
So, maybe a couple of million that was in the post-filing.
Great, and we are receiving our half a million dollars a month payments. Great. So, is 30, why I'm asking that, is $35,000 enough to see this through to completion? Because that's why we're doing this, and I've made this argument before when this has come out. We're owed X number of millions of dollars. We must see this through. We must keep retaining our legal battle here, so I support the request, but we, is this enough to see us through, do we think? It's a best guess, I understand.
I would hope it is, Council Myers. We've done a lot of the heavy lifting and a lot of the substantial work already, so...
I want to remind people why this is important. We're still aiming towards a huge amount of money here that we're trying to recover for our community. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on that matter? Seeing none? Council Myers, anything else?
One more, 6.22 pedestrian crossover facilities.
Go ahead.
I think Mr. Rumiel's going to go to the mic, likely.
Welcome to council, Mr. Rumiel.
Thank you.
I'm very, 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 very happy to see this report through you, Mr. Mayor, Carl. I must say that when I came on council in 2006, addressing the need to find a safe way for folks to get from that densely populated north of Queen Street area over to Bellevue Park, our premier facility for summertime, you know, I had no idea it would take 11 years, and I'm still not assured it's going to happen. I'm not 100% in agreement that installing the crossover at Churchill Boulevard will address the myriad of requests that we've had over 12 years from the folks who seek to cross that lake. However, I do accept the rationale, and through you, Mr. Mayor, Carl, would you like to explain a little more of what that rationale is connected to the hub trail and, of course, the new location of the splash pad and all that? Would you mind expanding on why you've made this recommendation of Churchill Boulevard for a crossover?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers. So, just what reasons not Lake is opposed to...
Not Lake, that's right.
I guess I could, we could say that the geometry at Lake is a little bit more challenging, sort of looking up a hill. It's a couple, a couple reasons to put it at Churchill would be the hub trail crossing, as well as the location of new splash pad. It still does connect with the park. I would also say that you're just adopting a guideline, approving a standard to, for these pedestrian crossovers, and we've suggested five locations where we could start, which we'll come back to council during the budget deliberations to get approval to move forward with in 2019, and it could be that we could do one at Lake, too. If that was, I mean, the decision, that would certainly be pretty close to the Churchill location, but, I mean, it's not a, in the same way that you do, you look for warrants for like a crossing guard or for new signals, it's not exactly the same for these pedestrian crossovers. I mean, you can put them where they should, they'd be best to go, based on traffic volumes, which we know, and the geometry of the road and that, so, I mean, it could be that we could be talking about Lake Street, too.
Sure. That would be great, and I'm kidding aside, I have been for 12 years trying to get this addressed, because if those, I mean, everyone knows Bellevue Park. I know that some people think it's a good real estate site to develop for estate housing, Council. But, point is that it's a premier park for the community, and now we're expanding it more with the splash pad. But if you think about Queen Street, some of you in this room live on the south side of Queen, but where Bellevue Park is, between Churchill Boulevard and Lake, that the bulk of the population is on the north side of Queen, and that's where the sidewalk is. There isn't a sidewalk, per se, on the south side. So, we've been trying to get a safe way for people to cross from the north side of Queen to the south side into the park, and now we're more and more driving activity to the park. So, I will be lobbying. Churchill Boulevard's the new boundary between Ward 1 and Ward 2. As a citizen, I'll be lobbying my Ward 1 and my Ward 2 councillors, whoever you may be, that we have to have something, definitely, at least at the Churchill Boulevard, one, please, council, when you're doing budget, but I'd really like to see it at Lake Street, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, Council Hollingsworth on this item? Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, worship, to Mr. Rumiel. This is, this is very good. Thank you for this report. Just for clarification, I've been fortunate to live in many different cities in Canada and the United States, and pedestrian crossovers, each city's a little different. I know that you'll provide further education when these come, but just quickly, will this include someone pushing a button? Will it include someone pointing their finger to say we're crossing? Can you just give a quick synopsis of what we can expect from a driver's perspective and from a pedestrian?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hollingsworth. These Level 2 pedestrian crossovers, they, they, there are, we're recommending that we adopt Type B through D, which they all have a push-activated button, an overhead rapid flasher, painted crosswalks with a ladder-type crosswalk. There's a couple added enhancements, whether you choose B, C, or D, but for the most part, those are the, that's the basics, is that they are push-activated, the button, a strobe-type flasher, and there is some changes to the Highway Traffic Act to, that will, like you said, with the education, we'll have to, that's why we want to do five at once, so that we can sort of, five or six, so we can provide some education to the public, so they can get used to, you know, what's required of the motorist as they see these lights flashing, because there's, there's different fines for if you don't obey to the rules, so there is going to be an education period, too.
Okay, and one final question on this topic. I know there has been discussion about those that are in wheelchairs or those are seniors that depend on walkers. I'm under the impression that the synchronizing, the amount of time, will reflect, seniors will reflect those that are disabled that may need the extra time to cross. And, because I understand there is a little bit of a problem in some of our traffic areas that the flashing light is not as fast, or it's too fast for some people to cross safely.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hollingsworth. I'm not exactly sure of what the timing is, from the time you push the button to the time the strobe stops, stops flashing. We can, I'm certain that we can deal with our traffic operations people to calibrate that to suitable length of time. Just quickly, I guess, how these things work is if a person in a wheelchair or a walker presses the button, the strobe activates, and then they proceed to walk across, vehicles are stopped. If they pass the vehicle that stopped and they can carry on, if that vehicle moves before they get to the curb, that's a traffic violation. So, it's a stricter crossing, so that's sort of the stuff that we need to get out there in the public, as we get these implemented.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to further education.
Council Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Won't be long on this. As passionate as Council Myers is about Lake Street and Queen Street, and I agree with you, that's an important intersection, I'm just as passionate about others in the city as well, including, and I'm wondering why we didn't consider places like Gore Street and Albert, because the traffic basically goes the same way as some of the other recommendations you have here. Is there a reason why we didn't do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Council Turco, we just chose five locations. We are doing the one on Wellington, just up the road from those locations. Gore Street, there's controlled crossings already, in pretty close proximity to, like one on Queen and one at Wellington. There's no reason why we didn't, or did or did not choose Albert or Gore.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, but we had, just a quick follow-up. But we've had plenty of historical data on the numerous accidents, still continuing, by the way, on that corner, and the traffic, the pedestrian traffic is a big concern there, so this was not considered, even after all these reports? Was that considered at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Turco. The traffic data that you're referring to at Gore and Albert was vehicular conflicts, rear-end collisions and failing to observe the stop sign.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pedestrian concerns are documented, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Turco. Council Butland?
Yes. Far-fetched, I don't know. Are there locations, when I think of a pedestrian crossover, I literally think of a bridge over the traffic and nobody has to stop, and is that done anywhere in North America?
I think, I think where they'd have a lot more traffic to cross, probably.
Well, I still ask the question, are there places that have this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Butland. I can think of a couple, yeah, that there are those pedestrian bridges or tunnels that go, that cross roads.
Would that be, is it too costly, or would that be the concern?
We considered a tunnel under Second Line when we reconstructed Second Line. It was ruled out. I can't remember the decision process on why, but probably had something to do with the cost.
Yeah, I don't know if it's that far-fetched. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Christians.
Just a, just a quick question. If this pedestrian crossover is approved and we put it in place, especially the one by Churchill Boulevard, is there a time period before it's fully activated where there's some type of notification to the public that, that this is going into operation? The reason why I ask that question is our history or our experience with, with new traffic changes, Gore and Albert in particular, people tend to have a hard time adjusting, and failure to observe something like this could be much more deadlier, because now you're dealing with specific pedestrians rather than vehicles colliding. Is there going to be a time period where, you know, the public's going to be educated, it's going to be in place, coming soon? How will we handle that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Christian. We'll have to involve police services quite extensively to, there'll have to be enforcement at these locations, usually gets people's attention, through media releases. If you're asking, will we put them up and then not use them? I don't think that, I don't think we'll be doing that, that won't be what we would be recommending, but certainly there'd be, you know, like a lag period where maybe police services wasn't, just providing warnings, but we would work with police services not to come up with a plan.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's, you know, a sign on the side, standalone sign that says this, on effect of whatever the date, this becomes a pedestrian crossover. Just to add that little extra assurance that people know that it's coming, I'm just, just fearful that somebody's not going to pay attention, either going to work or coming from work, and somebody's going to get killed.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Christian, yes, we will be doing that. We'd be doing it in terms of the actual intersections and providing signage in advance to say this is what is coming, but in addition to what we would do with media services for the police service, we would have, we have our own communications department. We would be making releases through social media, through the regular media channels as well, to bring people to that attention, where and when a pedestrian crossover is approved.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely support media relations and getting that information out as robustly as possible. Thank you.
So, we have, we're going to finish off this with Council Graninetti. Council Graninetti, on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Rumiel. Who decides on what intersections get these pedestrian crosswalks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Graninetti. We selected these based on, on some input and feedback through, from councillors of different areas of town where there was constituents requesting that there be a crosswalk. For example, the one across Gully Avenue was, was, I'm not sure, I can't remember who sent the request, but it was just some data we've compiled, just hotspots in town that have requested that a crossing would be, a crossover would be welcome. We could all, we also could use traffic data, could do pedestrian counts in the same way that we do for warrant calculations for crossing guards and that kind of stuff. It's not necessary, but we... guards and that kind of stuff. It's not necessary, but we, we can, we can do that.
Okay. Wellington Street and Beverley. We're, we're going to take out a, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramel, we're going to take out a set of streetlights at Huron Street to save 40 grand, and then we're going to put pedestrian crosswalk about 100 feet to the west for 30,000. Could we not just keep the streetlights at Huron Street? And then, because I, I know everyone says it takes time for people to adjust when you take streetlights out, and accidents are going to happen. I travel that road regularly, and it, it does get busy in the morning for about two to three hours, and especially in the evening, afternoon slash evening, from about 3:00 to 6:00. Would there be a possibility of changing our minds in doing this? It, to me, it doesn't make sense. For $10,000, I'd rather keep the, the streetlights there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Grandinetti. The, the traffic lights, the traffic signals aren't warranted from a, a vehicle count perspective. The pedestrian crossing, we've heard loud and clear from the businesses there and, and from council that they wanted to have a pedestrian, safe pedestrian crossing, way to cross Wellington Street, recognizing that those lights weren't, the traffic signals weren't, weren't warranted. So that's where we're at. I suppose, yes, we could put the, the traffic signals back, as you say, for, through the contract value of maybe 40, $50,000, and ignore this, the pedestrian crossing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ramel.
Okay. So we're going to, thank you, Mr. Ramel. We'll, we'll end on that matter. Councillor Myers, you have anything left on consent? I'm going to take that as a no when we come back. Councillor Grandinetti is next on my consent list. We're going to move to planning, because it's 5:30.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item 7.7.1, 188 Kohler Street, reported the senior planner's attached for the consideration of council, and a motion by councillors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that the report of the senior planner concerning rezoning application A818Z be received, and that council rezone the western half of the subject property from low-density residential zone R3 to low-density residential zone R3 point S, with a special exception to permit a two-story, 16-unit apartment building, in addition to the uses permitted in an R3 zone, subject to the following special provisions: that a 1.8-meter visually solid wood fence be erected across the rear lot line adjacent to the proposed parking area, and that the portion of the property be rez, to be rezoned, be deemed subject to site plan control, and that the legal department be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw to effect this approval.
Mr. McConnell, can I ask you to give a summary of this application to the council and to the folks watching at home?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
You can see your mic isn't on yet. Mr. McConnell, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This property is the former Alec Muir School on Kohler Street. Council will recall it's been deferred twice over the last few months. The proposal, there were several meetings with several of the neighbors during that time to try and come up with the best possible development solution. I believe we have that. The original proposal was, the developer was considering the possibility of adding a third floor. He's now decided to stay with a two-floor structure, so the existing building will not be expanded. Staff is recommending that the application be approved that would allow a 16-unit apartment building. And Mr. Spatafor is in attendance tonight on behalf of the applicant, should council have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. Spatafor, did you want to speak to the application?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon. Members of council, good afternoon. I think it's pretty straightforward. I, I don't expect there to be anything contentious with regards to any questions that may come up, but if anybody has any questions, naturally, happy to address those. The 16 units with the two-floor, the recommendation, my client is completely, or the developer is completely prepared to follow that, so.
Okay. Do you, do you councils have any questions for either Mr. Spatafor or Mr. McConnell? Councillor Myers?
Is there anyone opposed to this?
I'll get to that. Councillor Myers is asking if there's anybody opposed, but first we're, we're going to give council an opportunity to speak to the developer or Mr. McConnell.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. McConnell. Mr. McConnell, I believe that Mr. Tenazzo was leading his file initially.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Yeah. And I had asked him this question, but it was a few, a short time ago, so I just wanted to make sure I was updated on it in terms of, has there been any other opposition or inquiry about this project that we're not aware of? I realize that the mayor will ask at the gallery in a minute, but is there anything else that we received, other than there was an inquiry by residents to the south of this development, which I believe has been resolved? Is there anything more, Mr. McConnell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no. There are actually three letters attached to council's report. I believe those were the same three they had at the last meeting. Two from nearby neighbors, and one letter from the immediate neighbor to the south who is in support of the application as it's being presented.
Yep. I'll have some comments, Mr. Mayor, but I'll wait for those.
Any more questions, either the applicant or Mr. McConnell? Is there anybody here that's here to speak in opposition to the application? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing no more questions, council ready to vote in the application? No one here to speak in opposition to it? You want comments? Councillor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want, I want to thank staff, and I will thank the director of planning, and I think he'll pass it on to the planner that was on this file when I was going back and forth quite a bit with him. Mr. Tenazzo, I believe, was extremely thorough in working with the neighbors. I want to also thank and acknowledge the developer, Dave Russo, for a couple of reasons. First of all, Dave was extremely receptive to the input from neighbors and staff, and myself as a ward councillor. I really appreciate the care and the desire to create a residence that by exterior design will enhance the area. Alec Muir School, for those of you who don't know, it's, it's in the Kohler Wellington area, but it's part of our, and councillor Hollingsworth is on the committee, working with some of our heritage residential sections of the community, and this is one of them. So it's really critically important that what we do in repurposing some of the schools, and for example, this one, that it does meet with the area. Council will recall approving the development that's on Simpson Street, which is eight townhouses that's the same developer, and they took a lot of pains and time then to meet with residents and to take into consideration the architectural designs around that area. And they've shown the same sensitivity here. And quite frankly, I don't want it to be lost on council, that this developer really had the opportunity of coming to council for 26 units, which obviously has an economic difference from 16 units. But this developer chose to abide by some of the input from residents, and has, really is proceeding with a development that is something that's really going to enhance our area there in that part of Ward 2. So I, I want to thank our staff, Peter Tenazzo, who met with neighbors, who brokered the meetings with the developer, kept me as a ward councillor, and councillor Hollingsworth apprised and informed on the progress of the file. And I also want to, again, not let it be lost, that right now, or up until now, it's a construction site, this was a school that had vandalism, had graffiti, had all kinds of issues. Of course, as a lot of our abandoned schools do. Instead, this whole complex between Simpson and Kohler has now developed into a beautiful heritage residential area, and I'm just appreciative that we have a developer investing in our community this way, Mr. Mayor, and just feel that, you know, council ought to be very aware of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think the developer did a very nice job in the first phase of the project, and I think that gave the neighborhood a lot of confidence on the second phase of the project. The first phase is very nice, and I think it was well received on Simpson Street, and, and I think the Kohler phase will be equally well received. So no one here is speaking in opposition. Thank you to the applicant for being here tonight, and we have a vote in the matter. All in favor? The application is carried. Thank you very much, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the second planning item is the Economic Growth Community Improvement Plan. As council is aware, this is the public meeting that, for that purpose of considering that plan. The plan will be approved by bylaw. However, this would be the opportunity for a question and comment, and also the opportunity for anyone who's here to speak in either favor or opposition of it from the gallery.
Okay, well, let's start there. Is anybody here to speak in favor of the SIP? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the community improvement plan? Seeing none, council, do you have any questions about it? All in favor? Carried. That brings us back to six, 5.4.
5.4. Waste Management. Felicia Forbes, QP National representative, representative is in attendance to speak to the matter. This matter is agenda item 7.4.1, Contract Award for Waste Collection Services.
You are evidently, you are not Felicia Forbes, but...
No, I was offered 20 bucks to say I was, though.
All right. Are you speaking in her, in favor of her, Paul?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, provincial councillors, and viewing audience. My name's Paul Bochamp. I'm president, QP Local 3, Public Works and Traffic here in Sault Ste. Marie, obviously. Can I continue then?
Yeah, you can. It's your time. You go through.
Where was I? Okay, yeah. President, QP Local 3. I represent the members that provide quality services for all depended on, or sorry, we all depend on in our community. Many of them and their families could be affected by your decision tonight. We thank you for allowing me to address you on the issue of solid waste collection. QP has, QP, as you know, supports public services being delivered publicly. When crucial services are privatized, we lose the control over the delivery of those services. In town after town across Ontario, we've seen that services get worse and costs ultimately go up when we give all of our services over to the private sector. Currently, we have a hybrid model in Sault Ste. Marie, in absence of having services held entirely within Public Works' control. QP supports the continuation of this hybrid model. Unlike private companies, the hard work that QP members do is not motivated by having to turn a profit, which is the main point, but I guess we would have. The only goal is delivering high-quality services to the residents of Sault Ste. Marie. We've learned valuable lessons from other jurisdictions who've shown us the dangers of 100% private collection models, and in other cases, the value of maintaining a degree of public control. Toronto, Ottawa, Hamilton, all have split systems. In each of these cases, there are examples of public sectors performing better than the private operators in both cost and service. In every case, there's proven value in having a check on the private collection. Other municipalities have experienced major problems with private collections and moved to contracting in services. There are many examples of Canadian municipalities contracting work back in after experiencing the downsides of privatization. We'll share, we'll, we'll share with you just a few recent stories that illustrate the downside of private waste collection. Next door in Michigan, residents have made numerous complaints against Sault Ste. Marie Contract Green for Life for the poor delivery of services in their curbside collection. In Toronto, Miller Way Systems was found in violation of the city's fair wage ordinance. A recent annual report from the city's fair wage office found the company non-compliant of that bylaw. Because private waste companies are paid by the ton, they treat that as an incentive to pack their trucks. This is an environmental disaster. Toronto residents have documented this, observing and taping at least one private company mixing waste. This is not only a violation, or this not only violates contract provisions, but it also makes it very hard for the municipality to reach diversion targets, and ultimately, that will increase your costs. In York region, they experienced a litany of services, service issues in 2014 and 2015 with curbside collector GFL. This led one resident to mail back his waste to the corporate headquarters in frustration, which was widely reported. When we give away control and privatize 100%, contractors hold municipalities hostage as they drive costs higher and higher. When all your fleet is gone, and your house capacity is gone, you have no way of keeping the private contractor in check, because they know that you have no capacity to bring work back in-house and if you're not satisfied with, with their services. So once you sell off all your equipment, you're kind of, oh, put out to the curtain, and then you got to buy it all back. The public is best served by a system of checks and balances with oversight from an elected government like you, administered by the professional civil service and delivered by the public employees. As we know, at this point, you are not considering moving to a wholly public system. In light of that, we support the senior staff's recommendation made back in February, and again, in the current report, to continue using the current hybrid model and adhere to a 50-50 ratio. We also agree with the senior staff recommendation that the public sector comparator is a simple mechanism to keep a private sector honest. If the city, if the city were to sell off all its trucks and redeploy its workforce, and Sault Ste. Marie will be completely at the mercy of a small number of private companies who will do everything possible to maximize profit over service. I guess that's pretty much what they had written down for me. Hopefully, I did a good job of presenting it, but I wanted to add a lot more of my own stuff. But I, I guess just the one thing I'm, if I can just say it quickly, that concerns me is, I've lived in Sault Ste. Marie for 44 years, and I've always, you know, the garbage guy collected, and there's always a city garbage truck, and they always did a good job, and took a little bit more than maybe they should have, or whatever it be. But being a, a worker at the city of Sault Ste. Marie, we take great pride in what we do, because we're just a maintenance company and pretty much that it. We offer a service, and, and I, I'm just a simple truck driver. Giving something away to a private sector that wants to make money doesn't really add up into my, into my head, you know? I'm going to give you a good bid, and eventually I'm going to go up, because I'm not doing it for nothing. We're out here to serve you guys, and that's what we want to do, and, and I really hope you guys support the 50-50 model that is currently in existence now and can continue going forward, providing good service to Sault Ste. Marie.
Thank you for your presentation, Paul. The clerk is going to call up the motion on the staff report. So we have the staff report before us, which is 7.4. Council Shoemaker circulated another motion. We're going to deal with the staff motion first. If the staff motion fails, then we'll deal with council Shoemaker's motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item 7.4.1, Contract Award for Waste Collection Services, motion by councillors Christian and Butland, resolve that the report of the director of Public Works concerning Contract Award for Waste Collection Services be received, and that staff be directed to proceed with the provision of waste collection service via a hybrid model, 50% contractor and 50% city, and that the contract be awarded to Green for Life, and that the funding of carts be approved using the landfill reserve for upfront initial acquisition of $1,642,566, including HST, with an annual repayment from the tax levy to replenish the landfill reserve of approximately $165,000, and two new collection vehicles be purchased in 2018 from the Public Works Equipment Reserve for $700,000 to be funded from the uncommitted funds available.
So that's the motion that's before us. We'll take questions of staff on this report and the materials they provide. We'll start with councillor Bruny, then councillor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, I believe, to the, to Mr. Girardi. Regarding the contract, the city, when they collect the garbage, it goes to the city dump. If the contractor collects the garbage, where would it go?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Bruny. It'll go to our city landfill.
So we're, there's revenue there, coming in.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruny. There would, they wouldn't be charged for bringing the material in. It's city material, right?
Okay. Thank you. The present dump trucks that we have, if we go with the new system, can arms be installed on them to pick up the bins, or do we have to purchase new vehicles?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruny. I'm going to pass questions off to Susan.
Sure.
Susan Hamilton Beach, who actually wrote the report. For the equipment, first of all, yes, we have two trucks that can be refitted, but two more will have to be purchased. Now, I think there'll be further questions to that, so we'll hand that off to Susan.
Ms. Hamilton Beach, feel free to answer those questions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruny. Yes, we have, in our recent years, purchased vehicles that we plan to retrofit, should we be providing that service. we be providing that service.
Okay, thank you. And if the new bins, recycling bins are gonna be provided, is there a bag limit, weight limit for the residents?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruny. That obviously may return in a amendment to the bylaw. We suppose and we are planning to keep it very similar to the existing. Obviously, the cart size will accommodate that. Again, if bag tags are required, if your resident has extra waste, that can be placed beside the cart.
Okay. And also, in the contract, there, there's no escape clause like first, through the eight years, so if there's a dispute with the contractor, where does the city stand? Like, I know they gotta follow the contract, but if the service lacks in the, you know, in year two or three or four, what happens?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruny. The dispute resolution clauses are exactly similar to the ones we would have at this point in time.
Okay. And in the future, if we go with option two, there would be one reduced staff member?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruny. You are correct.
One reduced staff member. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have Council Turco next.
Thank you. I'm not gonna call Paul up, but I just wanted to make a comment that, and I'm glad that you're supporting the 50-50 proposal staff is recommending here, but I've talked to a number of colleagues around the province and I know you use Michigan and Toronto, which are unique situation, you probably have others, but the 50-50 proposal does work in a majority of communities in Ontario because I've asked quite a few of them. Having said that, I do have some questions for staff.
Go ahead.
To Susan Hamilton Beach, what process was followed and what direction from staff was provided to ACOM in the drafting and execution of the tender?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Turco. We use an RFP process. We have used this in the past and it is quite effective. So, certainly the core, we outlined the core services which we were after, although we allowed the proposal submissions to provide the information and details as to how those services would be provided, obviously costs included.
And there were other, through you, Mr. Mayor, there were other companies that provided the tender?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council, I'm sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Turco, yes, we received four submissions.
Okay. And one final question, and I think somebody alluded to it a little while ago, what the seven years, Council Bruny. Why seven years? Is there, is there a reason for that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Turco, it is in fact eight years and that, in fact, is generating the life of waste collection packers and how it would be financed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have Council Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Through you, your worship, to Susan Hamilton Beach. You mentioned the carts, I believe, and so my question is, we have a number of seniors or those that have difficulty handling those carts. So, my question is this, how do you see helping those citizens that struggle, that can't really move those carts to the curb? We've received these concerns, as you know, for recycling bins, recycling carts, but now we're talking about garbage. So, how can we help this group?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hollingsworth. The carts that have been selected for waste for your single-family residents is slightly smaller or is smaller than the recycling cart. It can be filled to the extent, obviously, that that resident needs be. So, if there's one bag placed in that cart, it would certainly be of a lesser weight than a larger family. I've run tests. I've used those similar to a walker, you know, at my driveway, which actually has an elevation to it and it's quite easy, I would think, to maneuver. I mean, certainly, snow is a factor, but in general, it's very easy to use.
And another question, I appreciate that. When you were doing this research, did you talk to the Committee of the Disabled or else other individuals that are more familiar with the needs of this group to see if they are able to handle these carts, especially in the snow?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hollingsworth. We did not consult at this point in time. More and more communities are going this way in an effort to, in fact, avoid the injuries and to avoid overstraining of carrying bags. So, by all means, we can consult to see if there are issues that can be avoided, but in fact, we think it'll be easier.
Okay. I can appreciate that, but as we move forward, I would still like to emphasize that we keep this group in mind because we are a friendly city when it comes to helping this particular group. And I know a resolution was put forward a few weeks ago and may be tied on.
Council Christian?
Mr. Mayor, this question to Ms. Hamilton Beach, just for everybody's consumption. Under a hybrid model, how many city trucks and how many city personnel are involved in weekly waste disposal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Christian. Currently with manual collection, we're talking two trucks with four employees. With an automated collection, we would be using three trucks, one driver each of those trucks, therefore, three, three operators in total.
So, essentially, under a hybrid model, city staff are providing the same service that a contractor is doing. My question to you is, when we, when we create the model, is the collection based on geographic areas? Is it done by, by days of the week? How does that work?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Christian. It actually has been quite an extensive process in modifying the routes. We started with existing boundaries and worked with GIS system with our existing collection staff, the management staff, and we have modified, which we think will best suit the community. By all means, with the contractor and ourselves at a table, they can be modified to optimize.
If we go to full automation, do we have any metrics on terms of efficiencies? How much quicker are the routes done? How many more locations can be serviced in a day? Do we have any metrics on that, on that part of the business with this new automated system?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Christian. Certainly stand to be corrected, but I believe you are looking at approximately 900 stops per day that would be done with the automated.
And what are we currently doing?
I believe it would be slightly more. May I consult my staff?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
We'd probably be at 1,000 to 1,200 at this point in time of manual.
All right. I have one other question, and I've forgotten it.
Well, that's too bad then.
And it's, and it's probably a really good-
Well, we're moving on to Council Shoemaker. I imagine he's gonna ask whatever question you might have forgotten.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just stalling slightly here, hoping that it'll jog my memory, but I can't think of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to Ms. Hamilton Beach. Ms. Hamilton Beach, what's the projected savings if we were go to a, if we were to go to a contractor-only collection?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. As stated in the report, on the waste collection side, you would be looking at approximately 125,000 per year.
And, and the contract is for what term?
An eight-year term.
Okay. And is the, and the carts which are provided by the contractor in either scenario are paid back over the eight years, if I'm not mistaken?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. No, that would be a one lump sum purchase once they are distributed.
Sorry. The reserve is paid back over the eight years, is what I meant to ask?
Correct.
Okay. But that money that, excuse me, that money that goes back into the reserve at this point is, is money that we have to levy through taxes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. Correct.
And when you've done your breakdown of the cost difference between 50% city and 50% contractor versus 100% contractor, have you factored in the things that you mentioned in your report such as, well, I guess, let me ask you this. What have you factored in to that, to that evaluation of the city's costs?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. All aspects of the business have been factored in. We've certainly considered labor benefits to the labor costs. Overtime has been considered, our capital costs, our maintenance on the vehicles, our management of those employees, we'll say WSIB, as well as insurance costs. Yes.
Okay. So, the acquisition of new trucks would be included in that breakdown?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. Correct.
Okay. And what about the retrofit of the existing vehicles?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. That, in fact, was budgeted this year because that would have to start almost immediately if it is approved and, and so it was not included in that model.
And the city currently does 100% of leaf collection. Am I correct in that statement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. Correct.
And if I'm reading your report right, it's suggesting that by getting out of the curbside waste collection business, we, our cost for curbside leaf collection would go up?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. It doesn't necessarily go up. What we have done with the original model is include the spare with our curbside collection. We would not require two spares. If we are only in the business of picking up organics, that spare would have to be obviously against that system. We wouldn't, we wouldn't require two vehicles.
So, allocated to-
This is a good, this is an important point, right? So, if you can really make sure you walk through this, because I want to understand it myself, because I didn't find it really clear in your report.
Okay.
Because there's a big difference with leaf and yard waste and without leaf and yard waste when you're comparing the, the numbers.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, the cost that has been provided with the entire system, if we are providing the hybrid service, across our entire service, we would only require one spare vehicle. And that's where, obviously, the economies of scale happens. If we are only providing the leaf and yard waste business, we would still require one spare vehicle, but that then is a fleet of two and for a seasonal service. So, thus, the greater expense there. I hope I'm explaining that clearly.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, thank you. Now, you, you also mention in your report, you go through the quantitative factors and then you talk about qualitative factors. I'm just trying to find, oh, I printed the report and highlighted it for this very purpose. You talk, yes, knowing that the municipalities in the business encourages better pricing. So, has this, I guess, we got four bids on this RFP. That seems like pretty good competition to me, but perhaps, I guess, would that be your opinion as well? That that's good competition? I mean, how much competition do we need?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Council Shoemaker. I would say the proposal submissions were excellent. We were for, received four very complete and well-described submissions. From a pricing factor, if you looked in comparison to the lowest price, they ranged to from 8% increases to well over 160% increase in price. So, a huge price range if you're looking at the financial factor.
From the current 50% contractor collection price?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. No, to the proposal submissions. From the lowest price bid to the highest price bid, there was over 163% spread.
I'm trying to understand that 8% increase. 8% compared to what?
The lowest submission.
I see. Does the lowest submission represent a cost increase for us over the current contract?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Shoemaker. I don't have that exactly in hand. I believe it's exceptionally, it's similar.
Yes, on page three of your report, you say, based on the financial assessment, qualitative factors above the hybrid model is recommended. Obviously, in, in this instance, we're going with GFL, who currently does our multi-residential, or up to recently did our multi-residential and currently does our recycling contract. Have we had qualitative issues with them in the past? Is this a big concern?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. We have a very good working relationship with the contract.
So, I guess my, my, my biggest concern, you could call it, is we are, we have an option in front of us that has a projected savings of 125,000 dollars a year, which is not being recommended. And what is being recommended is that we stick with the current model, which, which not eliminates that savings, only 12,500 and some dollars per year savings, but we're also looking to add 165,000 dollars a year to the levy for the repayment of the reserve for the acquisition of the garbage carts. Am I correct in that sort of general assessment?
Is it in addition to the levy or is it just from the levy now it will be allocated?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker, to yourself. It is, in fact, added to the levy.
And so, I guess, if we were looking at the contractor-only option, that 125,000 theoretically subject to the approval of council could be put towards the acquisition or the payment of, for the carts on a year-over-year basis.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. So, should council choose?
Right, okay. Okay, well, my, those are my questions. I've obviously got comments in my motion, but those are, oh, actually, I do have one more question.
I'm sorry.
On, through the RFP process, and I know there was another council motion at one point, but maybe it didn't factor into the RFP, maybe it did. Looking at not collecting on holidays or not deferring the collection for a day, was that considered through the RFP process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. It was. We, in fact, have obtained prices for a four-day collection schedule, which would, in fact, allow us to alter it and run that Tuesday through Saturday if there was a SAT. It's actually quite interesting what it did to the prices and some cases, it, in fact, increased it. So, certainly at that point in time, I would feel that we would have the option of sitting down with the contractor to, to see if that is feasible and if, in fact, it is cost-effective.
Okay. So, it's, it's to, it's not determina, it's not determined yet, it's to be determined?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Council Grandinetti and then Council Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Hamilton Beach. The 1.642 million dollars for the purchase of the carts, how many carts are we purchasing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Grandinetti. I'm going to say approximately 30,000 households will be served through this.
Okay. All the emphasis seems to be on Green for Life right now. Municipal waste recycling, do they do the waste collection right now, the other half of the city? Other half of the waste collection?
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. Mayor, through to Council Grandinetti, yes.
How's our relationship?
Currently, in the, in the manual contract.
In the manual, yes.
Yes.
How long is our contract till?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Grandinetti. It will be expiring as this contract is awarded, which would be July 1st, 2019.
Okay. And how's our working relationship with them currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Grandinetti. Again, I would say there's been no extreme difficulties. We do and have to negotiate through times where our bylaw is, in fact, not enforced by the contractor. Sometimes the perception is it's just easier to pick up all the bags instead of, in fact, you know, abiding by our bag limit, but in general, we have, again, a very good working relationship.
Okay. On, on page two of your report, beyond the, on, there's four bullets, beyond pricing. On the third one, it says, challenging service areas often remain within a municipality's control, even in cities that have opted towards privatization. For example, narrow streets, laneways, dead-end streets, one-way streets, home service from the rear of the properties. Do we have any, currently, do we have any issues with, with this? Because there's dead-end streets all over town. I don't know of any streets in town that are, have garbage collection and laneways and correct me if I'm wrong.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Grandinetti. We absolutely do.
We do, okay.
Much of our downtown core lists or entails all of those challenges, which are currently served by city forces who, who know the area exceptionally well and I would like to think we generally go complaint-free.
Okay, now, those are serviced in the back laneways?
In some situations, yes.
Now, now with these new trucks with the arms, is there enough room to get the truck in? Because we're gonna need a little more distance now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Grandinetti. Many of the obstacles have been all worked through with, with, by both contractor and ourselves.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
No problem. Council Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Susan. Can you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Susan, can you sort of summarize to council why you recommended the hybrid option? I, I've been listening to all of this and I'm, and I'm trying to decide which way to go, but I'm wondering if you could do that for me, just so I can make sure I'm understanding everything properly.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Hoopinen, in general, I think what has been described in the previous report and this one, this round of putting out the RFP, you know which prices you have back. If we were to remain in the game, obviously remain in the equipment, in the manpower from every aspect, should the city no longer be collecting curbside eight years down the road, there are consequences that may or may not be realized. In general, there have been experiences where the contract price is then much higher, you are then hiring more people back either into the city forces and you have to start at ground zero for your equipment.
Okay, thank you, that helps. And just one last question, the staff complement, how does that compare in option one and two? I, I don't think I, I got that either, I just want to confirm that I understand that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council...
I'm sorry, will we be having to eliminate a position, or I'm just not sure if you could explain?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hoopinen, if the city remains in the business, the hybrid model, we would no longer require one FTE, so we would lose one position, one staff. If we are 100% contracting out, there would be four positions lost.
Okay, so the one full-time employee, would they be just laid off completely out of the system, or would there be another job elsewhere in the, in the area for them?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Hoopinen, we would believe that it would acquire, it would happen through attrition, there wouldn't be an employee that was required to be laid off.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Any other questions to staff before we get to comments? The only, I just want some clarity on something, Ms. Hamilton Beach. If we go with the, the fully private contract model, so if we fully contract out, you show a savings of 125, but then when you take leaf and yard waste in, the savings is 12. So can you just walk us through that, like that point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have the flexibility with the staffing, because currently, obviously, our organics program is a seasonal program, so you're looking at a seven-month program. So again, the spare vehicle, from an equipment standpoint, is allowed to be spread over our entire fleet, so we're exceptionally cost-effective in that. As well, the labor pool to in fact staff that collection, they're able to spend the remainder of their year being productive in other, in other areas of our operations. So it's in fact very cost-effective to have the city do that, provide that service.
But I think Council Shoemaker's point was that if we, we have to buy these, we have to buy these bins, right? Whether it's private or public, or private-public, the, the bins are going to be purchased. And Council Shoemaker's point is, we're going to have to levy to, to repay the reserve for those bins, and we can use the savings of 125 to pay that down. But it seems to me we can only use the savings of 12,000 to pay that down. Do you understand my point? It doesn't seem like there's $125,000 of savings if we're fully private to pay down the bins.
There is actually, I believe, yeah, there's a $55,000 savings actually if we will go with that model.
Okay, where are you pointing to then? Because you're, you're, you are now sufficiently inconsistent with the material we have in front of us. It indicates that 100% contractors, 1.232 million, and hybrid, including 50% contractor, city, city lot, leaf and yard waste, is 1.244 million. So the difference between the options you presented us is $12,000.
Correct.
Where are you getting the 55 from?
Because, through, to you, Mr. Mayor, the, the price of the city only doing the leaf and yard waste with the spare then put to that is in fact goes up to 246,000, which is shown in the leaf and yard waste collection there.
I see that.
In the middle of the page. So that, with that increase there, if you were to add that to 100% of the contractor cost, the difference then becomes the 55,000.
Okay. So you're saying there would be $55,000 that we can apply to the cost of the bins?
Exactly.
Which would decrease that amount in the levy from 165 to 110?
Correct.
So, okay, I understand. Okay, I understand. Any other questions from council?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, so Council Shoemaker wants you to walk through that again. What I'm going to ask actually is I'm going to ask somebody to pull this sheet up that council's looking at up on the screen here. So it's up on here, so everybody at home can see it too. Mr. Clerk, can we have somebody do that? There must be somebody in the room that has the ability to put that, that information up.
Afraid it's not me.
So I think, Ms. Hamilton Beach, the confusion comes from the fact that you didn't, staff didn't show that third set of numbers in the bottom analysis. And I get what you're getting to, but I think you have to walk the rest of staff through that, the rest of council through that. Because you show one...
Correct.
And then you show the other, and you show the difference is 12,000.
Yes.
Well, it's a pretty small difference.
My apologies.
Yeah.
So in fact, this is a third option.
It is.
If we want to look at it that way.
But you're, you're going to have to explain to council what that is, because you didn't enumerate it here. And I think maybe what you need to explain when we pull it up is, what we should do is scroll down to the leaf and yard waste part of, of this, and then you could walk council through those. Not the report, Mr. Clerk, but yeah, the summary sheet. Okay, so if, if we all look, you see, and for everybody watching and the people in the gallery, this is a summary sheet staff provided to council, it's in the agenda, it's in the public agenda. And if you look halfway down, we have leaf and yard waste collection, 100% city, it's $175,000 a year, 100% contractor, so this contractor did it, they quoted us at 288 a year. And then, explain the third option there, 100% city with 100 contractor waste collection, it's 246.
So...
That's where you get the difference in the 55.
Exactly. So what you would then have to add together to get the third option would in fact be our curbside waste collection, option one, and that value there, the 246. And the 246 includes the spare vehicle and our labor costs to conduct the leaf and yard waste program on our, with our services.
Yeah, so if we're right out, so if we, if we're not in...
We're not in the waste collection at all.
It's going to be the contractor price plus the 246.
Exactly. And then that results in the difference between the options for that third option would be 55,000.
Does everybody understand that? So that would be the difference, is what we're talking about. Okay. But if we're in, it goes down to 12,000.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so comments, Council Myers? Oh, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our CFO, what would 55,000 be in the levy? How much? Percentage? We, we figure that about 1% in levy equals to about a million dollars in spend, so can you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers, that's approximately what you're looking at. So the 165 would be less than...
But it's not, it's 55.
Less than 0.2%.
What would 55 be?
Probably about 0.1%.
Thank you. Just wanted to make that point, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, comments? Well, start with Council Butland.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I think I have a reasonable handle on the financial part of this, but not a total handle. But I'm beyond that, and it's a public versus private, and I don't like the fact that we portray anybody as a villain in this piece. And say, well, they're just in it for profit, and we're the good guys and we just provide service. I don't, I don't want to go there at all. There is a place for public and for profit, there's no doubt about it. And that's why they're in business, to make some money. Our role is to provide a service, and this is one of those absolutely essential services like snow removal. And it's unusual. It's unusual that staff and union come together like this. It's not unique, but it's somewhat unusual. I wish there were more like this, and the regional rep and the local reps met with some of us to say, yeah, we, we do support senior staff's recommendation. And I say, you know, that's great. I, I wish, I really wish there were more of them. And the general concept of contracting out, I've always been against it. Sometimes probably it does work, but it's not a panacea that some people think it is. What looks good in the beginning, and it is purported out by Hamilton Beach, a monopoly becomes a monopoly, and you're good in the beginning because the prices are low. But as the time progresses and the first contract is up, up goes the prices. And we say, well, we're out of the business now. It's very, it's, it's impossible to get back in financially. So I, I just think this is the way to go. They've presented a good case to us, and both sides bringing forth their efforts to say, we support this. As far as the private partner in this agreement, Green for Life, I've been very, very pleased from a personal perspective, if I ever receive a complaint about anything. And in the beginning, there were lots of complaints about the bins, et cetera. They've always been very responsive. And when I'm looking for recycling council, I suppose, the people that I go to, and maybe I shouldn't mention his name, but Mr. Martella has a great deal of expertise, and so too do our crew, so I, I strongly, strongly support the hybrid model that we have. Thank you.
Council Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo what Council Butland said. I strongly recommend this, and I asked for recorded vote on the matter. I think it's critically important that we spend the time that we're spending on it this evening. I thank our senior staff for, the report is very thorough, and I appreciate it very much. I thank our staff on the front line who are providing service to our constituents. Often at the council table, we make decisions based purely on finance. Other times, we make decisions that are based purely on a service, and as my partner said, it's an essential service right up there with snow removal and many other essential services in our community, in my opinion. In this case, there isn't even a financial decision, in my view, that would put us at the risk of compromising our service for the years to come. That being, a savings of, even if it was the 165, but now that we can see it at 55,000, out of 160 million operating budget for our municipality, 55,000, yes, can accrue and you can do something with it, but it is .0000, I think, one is what our CFO landed at. So this is not a decision that can be made on some financial windfall for the community. And as I said, for me personally, it makes me uneasy to think that we would be in a position in future years where now we can't go back and provide a service that is an essential core service in our community, should we be required to do so. I just feel that it, we're putting the community at risk to do anything other than follow the staff recommendation for hybrid, and I totally support it. Thank you.
Council Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the lively discussion around the table tonight. I think it's, you, you said at the last meeting, or whenever this was previously before us, that it's always good to look at these things regardless of what the ultimate recommendation is. So we're going to disagree on recommendations every now and then. This is one where I think every way that we've looked at the analysis, it's been, it's been a savings to provide contractor-only collections. So whether it's 12,500, 55,000, or 125,000, every way we looked at it, there was savings, in some cases, substantial savings to go with contractor collection. Do I think the current model is bad? No, I don't. Do I think that there are better models? I think, given the information that's before us, better models do exist, and they're what I'll support tonight if, if we get to that resolution. However, you know, I am, I'm happy that this discussion's happened, that we've got the information before us, and that's really what I had hoped to accomplish by having the RFP of both systems, is to get the information in front of us. I may disagree with some on which option is the best one, but I recognize that, you know, obviously, the will of the majority is, is what carries, and, and that we all have a better understanding of our waste collection system and, and more information to make the right decisions.
Thank you, Council Shoemaker. Council Christian and Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Council Butland and Council Myers, I think it's important to recognize that this is one situation where we have our staff and union representatives coming together. I think that's a good thing. I think it was a healthy discussion, as, as Councilor Shoemaker points out. I'm quite happy, on a couple of fronts, that, that GFL was awarded. Not that the other suppliers aren't good, but we do have a track record with GFL. It's well-run, I'm quite happy with the service they provide me personally, so in that regard, it's good. I think the salient point here is though that we're investing in automation, and you can argue that, you know, this one might cost a little bit more than that one. But just much like the issues we dealt with with Smartrid, et cetera, we're investing in our future, we're moving forward, and I think that's important. We could split hairs over costs, et cetera. This is going to be a more efficient system. I think that if we went full contractor, in terms of savings and personnel and whatnot, there just isn't enough there for me to vote against staff recommendation. I recognize that there are some savings, and I'm very aware that every dollar counts, but I think the major issue here is that we're investing in a new system that's going to make the whole process more efficient. It's going to be good for staff who are doing waste collection, health and safety, and GFL is good at what they do, so I think this is a step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too echo the sentiments of my fellow councillors across from me and Council Christian there. I, in all my years, I have never seen, with all due respect to other issues that come forward, this kind of cooperation that I met with Rep. Dave, Dan, Dave, is it, Dave? There you go.
Big Dave.
Big Dave, yes. And this is what people, in my opinion, this is what people want to hear, this kind of discussion that we're having it. But this is what matters to the taxpayers. This is, this is one of those things that matters, it's what I call a no-brainer. It's a win-win situation with our bargaining unit and also staff. I had to ask Big Dave twice, are you sure you agree with this? He said, he said, yes. So here we are, people want to see us talk about, you, Council Steve talked about the essential services. This is what matters to the people. This one, they pay their taxes for this kind of stuff. Waste collection, garbage, snow removal, good clean water, low taxes, this is it. So I'm going to support the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor. Council Hollingsworth.
Thank you. My comments will be just brief. Yes, it sounds like, bottom line, we're going towards efficiency, and I'm a, I'm a great supporter of efficiency. But I agree with what I've heard tonight, that in eight years, it does make me nervous that once we're out of the business, we're out of the business, and you never know what the future holds. We as municipalities responsible to make sure that sanitary processes are upheld, and the hybrid system would definitely continue to keep us in the game and also use a partner. But the most piece I want to just emphasize is that working with Public Works, flexibility for our constituents, flexibility for those that live in our community, to me, is very important. It's important to me that we call Public Works and to say, such and such a driveway, the garbage wasn't picked up because of a situation that was unique to that household. the garbage wasn't picked up because of a situation that was unique to that household." And they're there to help through the situation. And so for flexibility reasons, they identify and they understand the needs of our constituents. They understand the needs of that population that may not be able to all the time pull up their garbage or may have a health reason. And our Public Works is there to help those individuals that may have that need. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bruni.
Just want to echo what Counsel Shoemaker said. I think the resolution was important to bring forward and I congratulate you on that because I think counselors now fully understand waste management. Some counselors, or the public did not know that we had four employees for the garbage pickup that they come by your house. So I think that's important. Overall, option two, I strongly recommend three staff members will continue to work. That's important. I believe having the contractor still involved will keep everybody honest, especially for the costs. And finally, I just want to congratulate the union that's sitting up in the gallery that works so well with management and I think that's very, very important. Thank you.
Any other comments? So I'll end this council. I think there are a few things that we should recognize as important here. One, I supported Counsel Shoemaker's motion to look at, get the information because from the outset of our term, we've always been trying to look at everything as intelligently as we can and make decisions that are based on good information. But we also, I think, have to make balanced decisions. And we have to make decisions with some foresight and looking towards the future. And my personal position on this is that I would be very reticent to see the city get out of garbage collection and to have no capacity to collect garbage. We currently don't have capacity to do recycling. It's 100% contractor. And if garbage was 100% contractor, I think it could well be that we put future councils at risk of significantly rising costs. In any event, I think one of the reasons why we had excellent responses and competitive responses is that we're in the business and we're doing it well. Reality is, we only have a few employees in it. So in any event, it couldn't have been significant savings. But we keep on doing it well. We set a standard. And our employees set a standard. And it's good for the municipal corporation. This is garbage collection. To me, it's one of the fundamentals like street cleaning. So I think it's important that we keep on doing it. I think with the hybrid model, we do have some private sector economy there. I have no concerns about the contractor that will be getting the contract because they do our recycling and they do a good job of it. I received no complaints about that. And I'm sure they'll do a good job on garbage. So I think this is a good example of a balanced decision. And I want to recognize the effort that staff and the bargaining unit made to work together. This is something that council has been very clear over the course of our term that we've wanted to see. And when you do, I think you can see really productive results like tonight. So I certainly accept council's recommendation and support it, sorry, council's, staff's recommendation, support it. I thank the bargaining unit and the representatives of the bargaining unit for working with us and being so reasonable to deal with and productive. And I think that's the type of conduct that we should encourage and acknowledge and that we want to see more of across the municipality. And I think it sends a great signal to our staff that when our staff work together, when I use the word "staff," I'm not simply talking about senior staff, that when our staff work together, our frontline staff and our management, this council will be respectful of that and will put a lot of weight in the recommendations that come from them on a joint basis. So I think it's a good precedent to set for the future. I think this is a balanced decision and I support it wholeheartedly.
So, Mr. Clerk, if we can have a vote? Counsel Turco? Counsel Fata?
Four.
Counsel Christian?
Four.
Counsel Hoopinen?
Four.
Counsel Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counsel Grandinetti?
Against.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Against.
Counsel Nero?
Four.
Counsel Bruni?
Four.
Counsel Myers?
Four.
Counsel Butland?
Four.
Mayor Progdonzano?
Four.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we're back to the consent agenda. Counsel Grandinetti, you are next on my list. Counsel Shoemaker, I'm going to ask you to take the chair, please. Just going to take a few-minute break here. So on the consent list, Counsel Grandinetti's next and I have no other list beyond him. So you can take it from there. Counsel Grandinetti, item's unconceded.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Item, where are we here? 6.8, the tender for two 40-foot buses. I don't know if there's anyone in the room that could answer this question.
Mr. Ver.
Mr. Ver could answer this question? We tout ourselves as being the green energy capital of the world. Have we looked at, the city of Toronto is looking at purchasing battery-electric buses, city buses. Was this put into consideration when we looked at purchasing two new buses?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Grandinetti, staff did look at electric buses. I would say at this time, there are some larger communities that are piloting those electric buses. And the costs for those systems and the buses themselves are quite a bit higher. So what we chose to do at this time with these first two buses was look at conventional buses. That said, we are monitoring reports and pilots by these other communities and we'll certainly look at that for future purchases of buses.
Thank you, Mr. Ver. That's it on this one, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay. Any other matter?
I have another item that would, question would go to Mr. McConnell on 6.9 Downtown Development. Just one question on $40,000 that we want to spend on, I guess, would be planted boxes slash flower boxes. Did this go out for tender?
No. What we're, what staff is recommending, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Grandinetti, the question concerns a recommendation to spend up to $40,000 for some large planters for Queen Street. This is to assist with the continued loss of trees on Queen Street. We're not in a position to go in and spend significant money at this point. But what we have done is we're working with a company, a Canadian manufacturer called Hauser, who is manufacturing the furniture that we will be installing this summer on Gore Street, parts of Queen Street and on Bruce Street. And this is a very large planter. There's actually several types that complement that furniture design. We've been working with the manufacturer to make sure that they can be moved by forklift. We can use these for various community events as well as putting them on the side of the street. And when Queen Street is eventually redone, these planters can be moved elsewhere in the downtown. So we are recommending that we sole source to that one company to a maximum of $40,000.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McConnell. One more question through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Mr. McConnell. Did we even consider looking at a local manufacturer, if there is one, to build these boxes for us?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Grandinetti, that is a possibility that we could, we could look at. But again, this is a company that's in the business. They're very competitive and they do complement the other street furniture that we will be using. So the answer to the question is no, we have not gone to local companies. We could do that if that was council's direction.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. That's it.
Any other counselors with matters on the consent agenda? Counsel Hoopinen? And then Counsel Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. 6.20, Great Northern Road Second Line Traffic Studies. I have a question for, I guess it's Mr. McConnell, I believe. Actually, Mr. Romel, sorry. It says that, I guess that would be February 6, 2017, council approved the study to be undertaken. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinen, that was, I believe there's two dates in there. Is that the first one?
Yes, actually.
First date was when council approved, I guess, Mr. McConnell's study to do the Great Northern Road Second Line traffic area issues.
Okay. Okay. And how long does it usually take to have a traffic study done?
Through Mr. Mayor, through Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinen, that would really vary on the, on the scope of work. For a traffic master plan, it could take a couple of years.
Okay, good. It seems like it has been taken a while. And it also seems that since we requested this, I've been receiving quite a few calls about the busy intersections. And it's the busiest developing ward, I think, in the city right now. There's a lot of traffic issues. I don't have the study in front of me, the environmental assessment that's on the website. But can you tell me, the Third Line and Great Northern Road, is that included on there? I've been receiving calls about no turning left when you're driving. I guess it would be west on Third Line onto Great Northern and it's a bit of a difficulty getting through. Would that be on the study?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinen, I don't believe the intersection of Third Line and Great Northern Road is part of this study.
Okay. I'm not sure if it's because of the construction that's going on on Black Road right now, but could that be? What would we have to do to have that looked at? Because there are some, you know, I am getting quite a few calls from folks saying that it is difficult getting, having a left-hand turn onto Great Northern from Third Line.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinen, we've had some feedback from the public on that as well, too. It could have a little bit to do with the Black Road being closed, not being able to get north-south on Black Road and then detouring over to Great Northern via Third Line.
Okay. So you think it's temporary? Is that?
I think, to some degree, it is. We do look at these intersections from time to time, do turning movement counts and traffic counts.
Okay, great. Now, the Old Garden River Road and Second Line, I believe that's in there as well. I had also received a call from a resident asking about whether we had the capability in the city to put the traffic lights on red when ambulances go through. I said that was a very good question and I told her that I would find out.
Through Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinen, is something we'd have to review with the traffic operations staff. I'm not sure if Mr. Girardi would have that information. We could review that with Andy Storozowski and his traffic, the operations people who set the, work in the controllers and set those, do that work to the traffic signals?
Okay, thank you. That's good. And actually, I think that's all I have on that one. Thank you, Mr. Romel.
Counsel Hollingsworth on 6.20?
Thank you, through you, Acting Mayor. Shoemaker? Mr. Ramon, just one question with regards to the active transportation portion. I know that you made some recommendations on maybe some cycling lanes. Who in the cycling community did you consult to help us understand what is best for the active transportation group, the cycling community? Was there a particular committee? Was there a particular group?
Through Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Elliott. He's on the stack, to me, our staff member on the stack committee. He could probably better address that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, yeah. In a situation like this, everybody has consulted, all the agencies and notices are sent out, public notices, everybody's invited to, for input. And in addition to that, the Sioux Trails Advocacy Committee, I believe, SDAC, they're all involved as well. So they're all very knowledgeable at the study and participated in.
Okay. I may sound like a broken record because I seem to be always asking you this question. So for the viewers at home, for the benefit of them at home, it sounds like we're still suggesting that the cycling lanes be looked at on Second Line or elsewhere. Is that correct, or North Street?
Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, the cycling lanes, the active transportation portion, the lanes that are being endorsed by this study are on the Northern Avenue. There's an environmental assessment that's just been posted as completed. That was at last council meeting. And the timing of this report is such that this specialist is saying, "Yes, that's a good idea." When you look at the active transportation in that whole area.
Okay. Good. Just want to keep the active transportation on the priority list, which I know all of you are doing, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Anyone else on that matter? I have some questions on that matter, so. At Old Garden River Road and Second Line, there's been a fair number of, fair amount of feedback, if you want to call it that, about requiring a turning arrow there is, and I know that part of the recommendation of this engineering study is optimization of the signal lights. Would that include a turning signal or an advanced arrow at Old Garden River Road and Second Line?
That does include the implementation of a left-turn phase at Old Garden River Road and Second Line, yes.
When, in terms of timelines, would we be looking to do that?
Well, that would be one of our recommendations that we could implement sooner than later. So again, speaking with our traffic operations people, with endorsement of these reports, we'll speak to them right away and see what can be done with the current equipment that we have there.
And I know Counsel Hoopinen touched on it, but at Third Line and Great Northern Road, that's another area where I've seen certainly an increased amount of feedback about requiring turning lane from Third Line onto Great Northern there when heading south onto Great Northern. So if in the optimization phase, a left-hand turning signal could be looked at there so that if it ultimately is required in the future, it doesn't mess up the optimization, if it could all be looked at as one package, I think that would be helpful. And perhaps I can ask staff to do that as part of the process or if you require a resolution to that effect, happy to do that as well.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Now, for some of the bigger projects in this study, what would be the timeframe for complete? I know there's, it seems to me, at least from reading the engineering report, that there are some quick wins that we can get within the next year or so. But that is, as Counsel Hoopinen notes, certainly the busiest area of town in terms of traffic. When might we see some of these other projects that will relieve the traffic in the area implemented? And what are the steps that we need to get there?
So some of the larger initiatives are complete new road extensions, like total new roads that don't currently exist. So those would require their own individual environmental assessments and it would require the more rigorous Schedule C. So those studies take some time and they take sometimes added time to go through the public consultation process and appeals to the minister and that. So, I mean, those, with endorsement of this, of these documents, we can start planning for picking which environmental assessments we would like to start. Mr. Elliott does set those on a yearly basis, so he may have a better idea of when he, which ones he wants to start right away. But I would think we would start picking away at them within the next 12 to a year or so.
Is that about the timeframe you're looking at, Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, Mr. Acting Mayor, yes, we would, these environmental assessments can take a while, so we would recommend that they start soon. So we'd report back to council with the initial phase and probably two, probably two of the environmental assessments, each, one on each side of Great Northern Road for those specific, to address those problems. They take a long time. We usually budget them as part of the miscellaneous construction budget. And we budget a bit of money for an EA in the first year and then we just keep adding to it as we go because we, as I've said before, we never know how much these environmental assessments will cost. So we would probably be recommending to you that they start sooner than later.
Okay. And then what would, you know, after an environmental assessment is started, what's the general turnaround time in terms of work starting?
Mr. Acting Mayor, that does vary, depends on the project. It's one of the reasons, I think, why EAs have a shelf life of 10 years now and time can tick by pretty quickly. If it's council's will to do a project, we would certainly blend the big project into the capital planning. Your capital road expenditures are approved each year. We come with a separate plan each year for it. So they can be moved on fairly quickly if that's the will of council.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I know Counsel Hoopinen probably hears the feedback. Yeah, definitely. I mean, I know Councilor Hoopinon probably hears the feedback. I'm sure the current Ward Five councillors hear the feedback that that intersection at Second Line and Great Northern Road certainly is not getting any better. So I guess whatever we can do to alleviate some of the pressure points more quickly than, as quickly as possible, I suppose, would be helpful. In terms of active transportation, there was some debate last fall about a multi-use path on the south side of Second Line. I see in the engineering report that that's not recommended. There were proponents of that. I know that there was a fairly sizable petition for a multi-use path on the south side of Second Line. Do we know if the proponents of that multi-use path are content with the recommendations of the engineer or are still advocating for a multi-use path?
Mr. Acting Mayor, we have discussed the recommendations, the report, with two individuals who were fairly outspoken about that, about that trail. And we advised them that it's the recommendation of this professional that we just do a sidewalk on the south side of Second Line. They seem to be content with that at this moment, so it's our recommendation to proceed with that sidewalk.
And what's the timeframe for that?
That should be done. We have, the price was carried in a contract last year. If that contractor will honor his price to do it this year, we could construct it this year.
Okay. Those are all my questions on 6.2. Councilor Hoopinon, are you done with the consent agenda? Councilor Bruni?
6.21, five-year capital road. I guess the question will go to Mr. Elliott. I'm looking at the Capital Works Program spreadsheet that you provided. In 2019, it's $24 million. 2020, $19 million and a half, and it dips in 2022 to $15 million. So I guess my question is, it seems like we're going to be spending less money on road improvements in the next couple of years, if these figures are correct?
Mr. Mayor to Councilor Bruni, the reason that the funds are up significantly in 2019 is because we know we have the Small Communities Fund grant for reconstruction of Fort Creek Aqueduct. That's probably the biggest thing there. The other, there's more of the aqueduct work in 2020, and then there isn't any grant-funded aqueduct work in 2021. So you see, that's why you see it going down. I would also add that each one of these numbers assumes a $3 million connecting link grant going forward, and we certainly don't know whether we have that or not. But this is a potential overview of what we could do if we get connecting link grants over the next five years.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on that matter? Councilor Bruni, you have other matters in the consent agenda?
Just one more, Agenda 6.11, future Sioux-Souset Marie project update.
Go ahead.
When I was reading the agenda, something really came out to me that it says, it says, commit to cost overruns of the project is a responsibility of the city?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that, and then Councilor Tom Verrett can speak to it after. Al can comment on this, too, if he likes. There really isn't any potential for this program to have cost overruns because council approves, like, has approved a budget for it already. Staff has that budget. All the project staff is going to do within this program, come to council for approval, can't run over. But NOHFC requires this language now with all of its funding. It's more, it's more relevant to like a construction project, right, where there could be a cost overrun, say, on doing, like, you know, a large scale. If you do an aqueduct, there could be a cost overrun. If you do a building project, there could be a cost overrun. And the funders are just making it clear that although we're participating in this project, we're not taking any responsibility for cost overruns, and we want you to specifically acknowledge that. So there should be no concern from this body that there will be cost overruns because staff is not allowed to approve anything outside of, to fund anything outside of the current funding envelope.
Okay.
So it's required by our funding contract, our funding responsibilities, but rest assured that it's not a concern or it shouldn't happen.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Bruni, I echo those comments. Again, we were very pleased that both the federal and provincial governments looked at us in terms of this unique project. They were worried that there were some operating components to it. Normally, it's very much on a capital basis. So that's why they normally don't put that in because they know there's going to be cost overruns and you could approach it in that way. With this current program, we would not be going for any cost overruns, and we would be coming to council if there's any change that's going to be taking place to the program in advance if those changes taking place.
Okay. And my final question, whoever wants to answer, the Community Development Roundtable and all the working committees, action teams, are they going to be open for public? Like, is there going to be any type of postings on our website that they're having a meeting that say if people want to go and see it or want to listen to it?
Generally speaking, no. There are elements to the different action committees. If they want to seek public input or want to have a public session, they're certainly open to do that. But these are very much like working groups that are working on specific topics and questions. And it's also ad hoc, right? So sometimes the group might want to get together on fairly short notice, but we're not approaching it like these are open public meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the consent agenda? Councilor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one about purchasing a Zamboni, where is it? 6.7.
6.7, so we're on 6.7.
Through you to Mr. Verrett. Mr. Verrett, appears that the...
Self-propelled ice resurfacer.
Self-propelled ice resurfer.
So don't look for the words "Zamboni."
Well, the one we're going with is a Zamboni.
Yeah, that's right.
But it is more expensive than the one that says it does not meet specifications. So what is it about that Olympia Millennium model that doesn't meet specifications?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Shoemaker. The specifications was for a gasoline-powered ice resurfer, and the one that did not meet specifications was propane-powered.
Okay. Have we, I guess, is there a reason we wouldn't accept a propane-powered one?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Shoemaker. Staff did look at that. There were some concerns with the infrastructure required, the training required, and the, some of the related costs for having a single unit that would be propane-powered versus the rest of the gasoline-powered fleet. It's something we will monitor and look at, though, moving forward to see if there is an opportunity down the road.
Okay. Anybody else on the self-propelled ice resurfacing machine? Councilor Shoemaker, do you have any others on consent? You want to canvas?
Yes, the 6.5 Truth and Reconciliation Committee.
Sure.
So I was one of the councillors initially appointed to this committee, and it appears I, through this report, have lost my role. But I guess, who does the advisory committee advise to? That's not terribly clear here. Will they come and advise, with recommendations to council?
So let me be clear. You're welcome to participate on this.
Okay.
So this is a result of outreach to the First Nation communities, and some looking at how other communities were doing things. And I had a meeting with both the chiefs, and they had suggested this would be, I had talked to them about what I saw some other mayors doing and potentially some of the other things we talked about we could do together. And Chief Sayers, Chief Surratt, and I talked about having an indigenous advisory circle where we can come to it as a community and talk about things going on in the community. We can get feedback. So the advice would be to us at large, right? So it would be something that is open. It's why it's a circle, and you would certainly be welcome to come there and participate in it. At Chief Sayers' suggestion, we decided we would call it the Baoteng Advisory Circle, which I thought was a really nice suggestion. I was happy to act on that. So this was really done, what we asked after to do is consult and come back to us. And after some time had passed and some outreach was made, it was evident that it was really my responsibility to do the outreach. And as, after a number of conversations with our First Nations partners, this made a lot of sense. We went through the Community Adjustment Committee process. Furthering our indigenous relationships was a top goal, and when we discussed some of the ways to do that, it just all aligned, right? So instead of having multiple bodies that are looking at this, we said, well, we'll do it this way, and we'll include, we certainly would include anybody from City Council who wanted to come and participate in it. So we'll keep you apprised of whenever we do get together.
Okay, perfect. And then I guess just to hit on one of the points I think I heard you touch on, any recommendations that come forward will come, you know, as a decision to be made by council?
Sure.
Okay.
So like, it would be, it would be the place where council would go to get feedback about, you know, what we can do to move forward as a community and what they might think of an idea that we have, or maybe some input on ideas that they'd like to see us move forward with.
Okay.
So I see it very much as an advisory circle for us.
Thank you.
Councilor Myers on that?
Are you done?
I'm good.
I was also on that committee, Mr. Mayor, and I think we were appointed by council. So I was just going to ask procedurally of the clerk, do we need to formally sort of disband that committee? Because I believe that Councilor Shoemaker and I were both appointed to that by council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Myers, I don't think there's the need to do anything else. The report notes that the mandate of that committee would transfer over to this.
Okay, so we don't have to formally dissolve the committee or anything like that? Okay. Thank you.
On that, Councilor Butland? Okay. Councilor Shoemaker, can I move to Councilor Butland on the consent agenda here?
Uh, yes.
Councilor Butland?
6.3, recruitment of new city solicitor. It indicates that the city guidelines suggest, I guess, that we have a selection committee. Is the option still available to appoint and/or have a selection committee? Are they both available to us?
Well, ultimately, City Council decides what to do. City staff is recommending that we go through a selection process. If City Council was of the opinion we should appoint, you would be, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need a selection process.
Correct.
Right? So if you're not in favor of this resolution, then that's a different issue.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't decided to go through this process. It's before us for a decision tonight. So you're asking if it's open to us. It certainly is, but this is the recommendation from City Staff. Councilor Myers?
And I think I had sent an email and asked, again, I guess it's a bit of a procedure question, I offered to go on this when you were seeking representation from council, but I wasn't sure if you had hoped to conclude the matter prior to the end of the term, where it would be inappropriate for me to be there, but I made the offer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Councilor Myers. You were the only councillor that has indicated to me so far that you wish to serve on it. So when this item came up, I was going to bring up that fact. The timeframe on the selection will be well within the term of this council.
Well, and I'll put on a campaign now to my fellow councillors to support my offer to go on the committee.
Okay, so is that incorporated into this motion, then councillor? Sorry, everybody's a councillor tonight, Mr. Sir.
If council's amenable to that, I can just make the change on the resolution. If there is another council member who wishes to be considered for it, then we would obviously have a vote.
So if another councillor wants to participate in this, we would obviously have to vote. City O would be putting up their hands to participate in it. Council Myers will serve as the council representative. So we're just going to amend this motion for the consent agenda to include Council Myers. Okay, any other matters on the consent agenda? Council Shoemaker?
I believe that, perhaps I'm mistaken, but I believe the folks who are here, here on the taxi matter.
Yep.
So I guess I would ask a question to get it on the table, which is through you, and I'm not sure, perhaps to Ms. Kenny, or perhaps to you as a member of the Police Services Board, Mr. Mayor, is there any information in the, that's available, I guess? I didn't, I didn't see it in the report. Is there any information available on the need for the increase for the sustainability of the industry? I certainly didn't see that in the, in the report.
Okay, so when this matter was originally before the Police Service Board, we didn't vote on the matter at that meeting. It was a February meeting. I certainly wasn't willing to vote on it at that time because I didn't see the information we needed to support the request. It went to the March meeting, which I wasn't at, and it was supported by the Police Service Board at that meeting, and it ends up before us. Frankly, at our last meeting, what I understood council had said to city staff was, we don't have the necessary information to support this. So we sent it to city staff, and they gave it back to us. What they, what you have before you is the information that's at city staff's disposal. At the Police Service Board, there was information provided with some comparator communities. And at the time, when you looked at that information, it didn't seem like the rates here, as they stood, were inconsistent with the comparator communities. So that was my point at the original Police Service Board meeting was, this is in line with the other communities. I think that when I asked, so what's the difference, the response I got, and I certainly don't want to speak for anybody in the industry who's here, was that we have different labor costs in Sioux-Souset Marie than they have in the other communities. And so it was more onerous to run a taxi operation here because of the labor costs here. And that was the basis of the nature and request for the increase because the folks here follow the minimum wage standards, where I guess the industries in other communities apparently do not. And the increase in minimum wage has an effect on the taxi industry here. I had a hard time understanding that because the law in Ontario isn't any different than the law in Timmins, or the law in North Bay, or the law in Thunder Bay, or the law in Sudbury. And I'm not suggesting they don't have a different cost structure. I just don't understand why they would be required by the province, or the law would require them to have a different cost structure than the cost structures in those other communities.
Right.
That's the best I can do in giving you that information.
That comparator information, I don't think it's one of these schedules, unless I'm mistaken.
Well, let's take a, what, this is item 6.18. Well, no, see, the schedules are, no, I'm just going through it to see if it was the same information. I don't recall seeing that. I don't recall seeing that on our agenda, but it could be. I'm just double checking. Councilor Bruni, did you want to add something?
Our northern communities, they're on commission, maybe a 60-40 split, kind of, whatever. No, no. Our taxi drivers here are on hourly wage.
Yeah, so Councilor Shoemaker, the information, the comparator information isn't on here. So, yeah, what was represented to the Police Service Board is that the industry here are paying minimum wage.
Yes.
That's correct? Yeah, that's correct. And in the other communities, they're not doing that. I don't, I don't know why there's that difference.
Okay. At the very least, that information would be helpful, but I think even beyond that, I don't, I don't care to see, you know, the financial statements of these companies. That's not what I'm asking for. But I guess I do want some justification, not justification, you know, a written breakdown from our staff after having discussed with the industry their basis for, their basis for the financial ask. You know, the comparator details would help, but I'm not sure that just laying out a spreadsheet is quite, I mean, I don't know. There's, I feel like there's a lack of information. I guess I don't, I don't know what it is that I'm missing, but I'm missing something, that's for sure.
So we'll go back to Councilor Bruni here.
Yeah, maybe it's not clear enough in the report, but they're asking for the increase because the minimum wage has gone up from 11-something to $14. So that's why they're asking for the increase. Because here in the Sioux, they're paid hourly. In other municipalities, they're paid basically like a 60-40, what do you call it, commission, split, whatever, you know? That's basically why they're here.
So perhaps, perhaps through to the solicitor, if she can answer this, what is it about this other system that allows, you know, it's probably not the circumvention of the minimum wage laws elsewhere, but how is it that they're getting off-cheap, per se?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Shoemaker. My understanding of it is that the industry either goes by way of independent contractor or by way of waged employee. And in the Sioux, I understand there was, I think there was a Ministry of Labor hearing that determined that... hearing that determined that, that our taxi drivers are, um, on a minimum wage, they're on an hourly basis. So in order to offset that, the industry is concerned because they're, they're limited at the ceiling of certain metered rates. This allows, doesn't demand, doesn't, um, require the, the maximum, but it allows for a greater maximum than it had in the past. The minimum has stayed the same. So it's, and also, I think there was a view at, at police, and I think possibly with this council, that, um, the industry would get, uh, a lot more market determined rather than having a city council or, or the Police Service Board in a, in a babysitter role, that it would be, um, a competitive market.
Well, just on that point, so, wha, why, what I keep on kind of coming back, why a city council? Is there something that legislate, like by, the legislation requires us to set these rates?
To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, previously, the taxi bylaw was, it was a little bit of an anomaly under the municipal act. Taxi bylaws could be delegated to police services, and they were delegated, and that was their one and only bylaw that they had. Then it reverted back to the municipality so that we now, if there is a taxi bylaw, it is the city who must pass it. Must we have a taxi bylaw? No. Must we regulate rates? No.
Okay, I understand having a taxi bylaw, and I understand wanting to regulate taxis. What I've been trying to get my mind around is the regulation of, of rates and setting these minimum rates and these maximum rates. Like, if you have a minimum rate, that means nobody can charge below that. But why would we put a floor on what somebody can charge? Now, if we have a maximum rate, I kind of get that to a degree, saying you can't charge more than this. But if somebody's charging too much, they're gonna price themselves out of the market. So like, why is, like, the, is there, are, does all, are all cities in the business of regulating the rates? Does every city regulate the rates? Or do let them, do some cities let the market regulate the rates?
My understanding is that cities that have taxi bylaws, um, set rates. Our, uh, position has been, whenever the legal department was involved, that we should be less and less involved in regulating taxis, and, uh, it wasn't that long ago that such things as the color of a taxi was regulated by that taxi bylaw, and we are gradually, incrementally moving away from that. Could we ultimately get to the point where we do not regulate rates? I think so, but I, I also think there's an expectation in the community that we have some oversight, if nothing else, on the rates.
Okay, so this, Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I look back at the chief's report that was dated March 29th, but it's in here as one of the attachments, um, it says currently Thunder Bay, North Bay, and Sudbury have approved fair increases, but that, to your point that you just raised, I'm curious to understand, does that mean the city of Thunder Bay, the city of, uh, North Bay, the city of Sudbury? Like, I don't know, I think I see nodding head with our solicitor. Are those three cities, is it the city councils that have addressed that?
And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, that's, that's correct.
So it is, okay, so those are, I mean, maybe there needs to be a bit of a discussion with those other, uh, municipalities, Mr. Mayor.
Well, look, we, it was here last meeting, I think, or the meeting before, and we, we told staff we weren't comfortable with the amount of information we had, we sent it back to them, and this is what they came back with. So it's before us. So, uh, it's either gonna stay on the consent agenda and pass with the consent agenda, uh, and then the, the industry locally, who does pay the minimum wage and has been affected by the minimum wage increase, will be able to recover that through their rates, or someone's gonna pull it from consent, and then there would be an independent vote. But if you're gonna send it back to staff, you have to do so with a specific direction for what you're looking for, because when you send it back to staff the last time, this is what we got, right? So, uh, either we leave it on consent and it goes to the consent, and we look at this issue when we look at the larger issue that I had raised earlier in the meeting about the fact that we asked staff two years ago to look at the taxi bylaw and how ride sharing would be affected by it, and we can look at our whole system through that, or we pull it from consent and vote on it separately. So I'd like some direction on that. Do we leave, are we leaving it on consent here? Counsel Shoemaker?
Just a comment to that effect, Mr. Mayor, I understand the need for this from the industry's perspective, you know, the minimum wage increase went into place, I think, six months ago now. So, uh, I understand that there's probably a somewhat pressing need for this, um, but, but to your other point, I do think a motion is, is warranted and will come at a future meeting, uh, on whether or not we should be doing some of these things that we're currently doing, sort of a whole, holistic review of our taxi bylaw, whether that incorp, is incorporated in the ride sharing one or is separate from that, I think.
As it currently stands, our bylaw, we do regulate rates.
Exactly.
So, so we have to deal with this request in some way, shape, or form tonight, because we do do that. So, uh, hearing from none of you, I'm just gonna leave it on the consent agenda and it's gonna go with consent.
Yep.
Any other matters on consent? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, can you read the motion for the consent agenda, please?
A motion by counselors Christian and Grandinetti, resolve that all items listed under date 2018-07-16, gen item 6, consent agenda and the addendum be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Carried.
Counsel, that brings us to gen item 7.8.1, Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center. A report at the Innovation Center is attached for the consideration of council, and a motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that the following persons be nominated to the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center Board of Directors: Asma Vesna, Chris Ray, Dr. Ron Common, and Deputy CEO, Community Development and Enterprise Services.
Any comment on that? All in favor? Carried.
Counsel, that brings us to, uh, gen item 8.1. Motion by counselors Myers and Butland. Whereas city solicitor Nula Kenny joined the City of Sault Ste. Marie Legal Department in 1995, and whereas in her capacity, she has served the corporation very well, and whereas Ms. Kenny has provided critical guidance to the mayor and council on numerous files over the years, now therefore be it resolved that mayor and council express gratitude to Nula for her work with the city and wish her much success and happiness in her future endeavors.
I don't know if we're gonna pass this resolution unanimously, Nula. Counsel Butland, do you want us to start, and move to Counsel Myers after?
A very, very good friend of mine said some years ago that he had a student in his class who was probably the brightest of the brightest, and, uh, her name was Nula, I don't know if it was, yeah, Nula Kenny was her name. And, uh, know Nula for all the time that she's been with the city. She's articulate, a straight shooter, that's a very definite quality. She knows her job content exceedingly well, very well respected in the legal community, and, uh, after all this time, I would consider her a friend. Talking to her earlier today, I had a personal story, I don't think if it's appropriate, but I'll, I'll tell it. No? Oh, come on.
I think she said no, so.
But I'll go ahead. And anyways, um, I, I may have been the mayor at the time, and, uh, I received several calls saying that young girls from a particular high school were going topless on the boardwalk. And I said, well, I have not heard any of these comments or criticisms, uh, but I said, I, I wonder if there's any legal opinion on this, so I forwarded, I said, why not call Nula Kenny, and she'll give you an opinion? She says, you crazy, it's too frigging cold in February. And the last we ever heard of the girls going topless on the waterfront. So, uh, thanks for your great service, Nula. I really enjoyed you. Thank you.
Counsel Myers?
I certainly am not gonna try to top that story, lest there are otherwise. Um, Nula, you know what I think of you, and I have gotten to know you all the years I've been around city hall, and that you've been here too, and I really appreciate the work that you've done, and, uh, you're certainly a consummate professional and knowledgeable, and that good Irish temperament gives us good entertainment many times along the way, and we certainly wish you nothing but the best, and thank you for your service to the city.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am probably, I think, yes, the only one here who had the benefit of both working with Nula as a city councilor and working for Nula as a senior student, so, uh, she was an excellent boss, as excellent a boss as she is a city solicitor, uh, and, uh, it's no secret, I don't think, that she is, uh, joining, uh, my law firm, and so I'll be happy to work with her again. Um, and, uh, I've, I've enjoyed our, I've enjoyed working for you, I've enjoyed working with you, and I'm going to enjoy working with and for you again.
So I can assume by that com, that common Counsel Shoemaker, that she's joining your law firm in a superior rank to you.
Yes, yes.
Which I think Nula will probably enjoy. So, listen, you let me, let me just, uh, sum this up, Nula, by really thanking you for your years of service to your city. We're friends, and, uh, when I started this job, I said to you, I hope we're friends long after I'm done this job, and I think we can successfully say that we will be. You're an incredibly intelligent person, and, uh, you're gonna give everybody over at Wish Art to run for their money, and, uh, I will miss your, your personality, uh, and, uh, I hope, I hope our friendship continues, and I certainly wish you the best, uh, in your, in your private life as a, a private practicing attorney. Good luck with that. Okay, so we will move on. Oh, so we have to vote on it? All in favor? All in favor? We're unanimously, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this brings us to the bylaw section. We do have four, I believe, that I need to read separately. First one, a motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that bylaw 2018-145, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the agreement between the city and Sioux North Auto Limited, also known as Great Lakes Honda, for registration of a city easement, and the transfer and leaseback of certain city-owned lands be passed in open council this 16th day of July 2018.
All in favor?
Motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that bylaw 2018-149, being a bylaw to exempt the wedding of Nika Tomasic at 5 McGregor Avenue on August 11th, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM, from the Noise Control Bylaw 8200, be passed in open council this 16th day of July 2018.
All in favor? Carried.
Motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that bylaw 2018-161, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the agreement between the city and Alcoma District School Board to provide municipal election administration services for the Sioux locality and organized municipal territory north of the Sioux-Sault Ste. Marie, and to repeal bylaw 2018-91, be passed in open council this 16th day of July 2018.
All in favor? Carried.
Motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that bylaw 2018-162, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between the city and the Huron Superior Catholic District School Board to provide municipal election administrative, administration services for the Sioux locality and organized municipal territory north, north of Sault Ste. Marie, be passed in open council this 16th day of July 2018.
All in favor? Carried.
Motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda and addendum, under date 2018-07-16, be approved, save and accept 2018-145, 149, 161, and 162.
All in favor? Carried.
Motion by council...
Mr. Clerk, before he moves to, to, to close this off, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Verre to introduce Mr. Anderson. We have Travis Anderson here tonight, who sat patiently through the meeting, in case there are any questions over projects at Sault Ste. Marie, and I think he should be introduced, because he's been a tremendous addition, uh, to the project. We've really enjoyed working with him, and he's bringing a lot of great, uh, expertise to the project. So Tom, if I can have you introduce Travis, I think it's important that staff see him, like, get to meet him and get to work with him, because he's a tremendous new city staff here, and we want to, wanna make sure you all know who he is. Tom?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To members of council, as the mayor indicated, Travis Anderson has joined us as the project manager for Future SSM. Uh, he will be providing updates to you, uh, throughout the project, and we look forward to those updates. He comes to us with over 14 years of project management experience in the natural resource sector, uh, including leading the development of large-scale renewable and conventional energy projects, and he has a lot of experience in, uh, project management. He has his Bachelor of Arts degree in environmental studies from Carleton, and MBA and a project management professional designation, and, uh, he's certainly putting those, all those skills to work for us, and, uh, will do so in the future as we work with all the various committees and the initiatives of Future SSM. We're really pleased to have him, uh, with us, and, uh, we look forward to having him update you in the future.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Welcome, Travis. Now we can close it off, Mr. Clerk.
Motion by counselors Christian and Grandinetti, resolve that this council proceed into closed session regarding a proposed acquisition of property, two proposed dispositions of property, labor relations or employment negotiations item, and an item involving potential litigation. Further be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
An motion by counselors Butland and Grandinetti, resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor?